of Hawaii at Hilo's College of Hawaiian Language to be here with all of you today. Before we move on with our introductions and our normal business, the chair would like to take this moment to read a statement on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Board of Trustees. It is with profound respect and sadness that this morning we honor the late Rowena Akana. She passed away this morning, devoted nearly three decades in service as trustee at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, as chairperson of the Board of Trustees. Though her tenure was marked by challenges, Rowena Akana's commitment to community, to native Hawaiian lands, and to strengthening resources for our people reflects the deep sense of ohana and stewardship that she carried. As we mourn her passing, we also acknowledge the many years she dedicated to the welfare of kupuna, to Hawaii's cultural legacy, and advocacy for Hawaiian self-determination. So may her memory be a source of inspiration, and may her spirit rest in strength and aloha. We'd like to take this moment, just for one minute, to honor former chairperson of the Board of Trustees, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Rowena Akana, and I would like to request that we do that in a standing one minute to honor her life and her legacy. Aloha, everyone, and welcome to the Hawaii Island Board of Trustees meeting for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. This meeting can be viewed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. I'd like to ask everyone to please be mindful when testifying. Each person will have five minutes to speak when we get to our community concerns portion on our agenda. This helps ensure that everyone has an opportunity to share their manao, as our time today is limited, and we'd like to hear from all of you who wish to contribute. Before we begin, I'd like to ask each one of our trustees here today to introduce themselves and their staff at this time, and I'm going to start to my right with our trustee from the island of Oahu, Kalei Akaka.
Aloha, pumehana. Pa'o Kalehikina Akaka. I'm honored to serve as the OHA Oahu trustee. However, I am a big island girl from here in Kona, and I want to say aloha no to the familiar faces that I grew up with, my parents' kumo, the haumana alongside my parents, and I want to say mahalo anui to all that came to join us today. Mahalo for coming to listen and share your manao. Truly appreciate you being here so that we can continue to stay on the pulse of the needs and concerns of our community, see what's working, and how there can be improvement and how we can kakoe' and collaborate with one another. Joining me today is my ohana, my other half, Tyler, and our little one, Bibi Anna, over there in red from Okokea'ave. And also joining me today is a part of my Akaka team, Nathan Takeuchi. Mahalo.
Aloha, trustee Akaka, trustee Wahai.
Mr. Chairman, aloha mai kakoe. I am John Wahai IV. I'm a trustee at large and the chairperson of OHA's Committee on Budget and Finance. I want to really thank all those people that made not just this meeting possible, but this entire week of meetings possible. It was, you know, they all did a great job, and they deserve all the accolades. I want to thank our chairperson, Kai Kaheli, and Hawaii Island trustee for all the work he did to make this week possible. And I do want to thank everyone who came out to listen to us and share their thoughts. And joining me is my staff. My aide is Melissa Winahan. I'm not sure, she may be outside, or there, there she sat on the doorway. Again, thank you, everybody.
Aloha, trustee Wahai. From Koai, trustee Ahuna.
Alina mai meke aloha, o'ana huna ko'inoa, no'akapamayao. Aloha, my name is Danahuna. I represent the islands of Koai and Ni'au. With me today is my office staff, Ivan Mahalana, is back there, and I just wanted to say thank you for all of you for coming out here. It's great to be here.
Aloha. Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai kakoe, ma'ua aloha. Ame ma'ua kupuna, aloha.
Aloha.
O'kili'i Akina ko'inoa, and I just feel so much at home being back on Moku'ake'a, where my family actually hails from. On the Akina side, we have the families of Edith Kanaka'ole and others. On the Lupenui side, my mother's side, we come from Kohala as well as the Ka'u district. And I want to thank so much for being here today, former trustees Mililani Trask and Ma'ala Masalman, without whom I wouldn't be in the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Mahalo to you. I'm here today with my assistant, Remi Kili'i Omalu, over there, wave, Remi, and I want to say, everything you have to share with us today means a great deal. Your manao is very important. We need to hear it. So I want to mahalo you for coming and look forward very much to hearing whatever you share with us. Aloha.
Mahalo, trustee. Trustee Galutera.
Aloha mai kakoe, everybody. The good thing about being the last on the line is that my colleagues have said everything I wanted to say. So I can move past that and just say aloha no to dear friends I haven't seen for a long time. I'm Brickwood Galutera at Large Trustee, one of four, and I chair the Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment Committee. It basically deals with legislative issues as well. So we're here to listen, and we're here to absorb, and we thank the hosts of this beautiful island for welcoming the board. Mahalo.
Aloha. Mahalo, trustee Galutera. At this time, I'd like to recognize our administration, and I will recognize Keishon Kikin, our Kapu'ne'ar chief, operations officer, and introduce the administrative staff.
Aloha mai kakoe, mahalo anui ke'ouyano kakoe, your trustees. This morning, we have with us our interim CEO and administrator Summer Silva, Hailema Fardin, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs, Pony Askew, Director of Econ and Business Resilience, Ku'ike Kalani Kamakeo O'Hello, Director of Oivi Wellbeing and Ainamamona, Jason Lee's Multimedia Designer, Lisa Von Sekona, Director of Community Engagement, Royce Campbell, Operations Manager, Iokepa Ka'ulua Beneficiary Services Agent, Kevin Chalk, Senior Systems Engineer, Sharde Freitas, Public Policy Advocate, Kaveni Ibarra, Compliance Agent, Paul Thom, Beneficiary Services Agent in Hawaii Island, Kahelani Kavehi Kani, Admin Assistant, and if there's anyone else from administration that I didn't recognize, mahalo anui for being with us.
Aloha, Keishon. Also here with the Board of Trustees team is our Board Secretary, Lejua Ito Kazu. Can raise your hand, Lejua. Jasmine Bronco, Hawaii Islands Trustee aide here in Hilo, Kapono Kio'Kona, our Board Counsel, Alina O'Young, the interim Board of Trustees Chief of Staff, and many other OHA staff that are here today. We also mahalo Olelo TV, who is here and broadcasting this live for the first time. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs is on olelo statewide, and that's a good thing, because we would like to bring the hana and the work that we do into hales all across this aina, and we mahalo you guys for being here today. Thank you. Here, trustee.
Mahalo. I would be remiss if I didn't mention my staff here. Alean Stender Durant. There she is. Thank you so much.
Aloha, Alean. Like trustee Wahai mentioned, you know, by statute, OHA is required to have a meeting on one of the neighbor islands once a year. This is that meeting. But this is not all that we have done over the last few days. We started, your OHA team, trustees and administration, started on Monday in Kona. We went to several site visits. We ended up at Ke'ala'ke High School, where we had a community workshop that focused on key native Hawaiian issues for our Lahui, and we welcomed our beneficiaries at Laopua and throughout the Ka'lu'akona area that joined us. On Tuesday morning, we got up and we headed towards Mahu'Kona. We had a chance to spend time there with Nakalai Va'aa and the Hawaii Island Land Trust, eventually made our way up to Waimea at Waimea Nui, and then we spent Tuesday night at Kana'oka Aina, where we had another wonderful workshop and a lot of really good information received by our trustees, while also at the same time, we are in the process of reassessing our mana imauli'ola 15-year strategic plan. So the information that we received from Ke'ala'kehe and from Waimea was very, very important, and those were led by our subject matter experts and the administrative team, our strategy and implementation team that facilitated these conversations around native Hawaiian education and healthcare and housing, economic development, small businesses, and finally, issues that were important for Moku'ake'a, specifically geothermal, mauna'ke'a, and military land leases and pouakoloa. Yesterday, 100% student body of native Hawaiians that attend Ke'ana La'ahana school there. Then we finally ended up at the Ke'okaha Gym and Kauanano Ko'ah Hall, where we met with the County of Hawaii to take a look at a project that we're hoping to partner with them to make the Kauanano Ko'ah Hall one of the best gyms in East Hawaii, so that all of our keiki and those that utilize that facility for sports and recreation can have one of the best facilities in East Hawaii to do that. And then we joined, all of us here last night, for what was to be probably our most widely-attended community workshop, I would argue, and one that had very, very passionate testimony from people that came out to voice their concerns on the many issues that are important to them and also important to this aina. And so we mahalo Kahak'ula for hosting us last night here. And now we're here this morning, and this is our official board meeting that we do, and we have a packed agenda. We have some very important work that needs to be done, and this board will need to be taking action on. One of those will be the emergency relief program that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs is looking to commit $6.1 million to our Lahui beneficiaries who have been affected by the government shutdown and also affected by the discontinuance of SNAP benefits by the federal government. And we know that there are thousands of our beneficiaries who are being affected by this right now, and OHA is stepping up to answer the call to help our Lahui at their greatest time in need. But we also have very important issues to discuss as well, and we're looking forward to all of you who came here to discuss issues that are important to you, whether it is military land leases, mauna'ke'a, there's been a lot in the news the last few days on that. I think it is a perfect time and a perfect opportunity to elevate these issues to the forefront, and I can think of no better place to do it than right here in Hilo at the College of Hawaiian Language here at Ke'elikolani with all of you here today. And so before we do that, we have two community presentations to present to the Board of Trustees, and then we have three action items that we will need to take in our committees, and then we will basically open it up to community concerns at that point and be able to hear from all of you. So at this time, if the trustees would indulge unanimous consent, I'd like to take our community presentations out of order, and I'd like to, out of respect for the College of Hawaiian Language here, give them an opportunity to present first. Our presentations are limited to 15 minutes. If there are questions that the Board of Trustees has after that 15 minutes, we can do that, otherwise we will continue on to the next presentation. So at this time, the chair would like to represent and recognize Ka'iu Kimura, the interim director of Kahak'ula Ke'elikolani and the College of Hawaiian Language. And before you present, Ka'iu, Lejua, do we have anyone sign up to speak on this agenda item?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay. Aloha, Ka'iu. Honored to be here, and you are recognized.
Mahalo anui. Aloha kakahiaka ena kahuva'va'io keke'ana kuliana hava'i. Ena ohana, ame na'kama'aina mai ne'ia'aina ohilo. Kahino'na ka'uaho'ope' pu'ahala o'upelo'a. Me ka'uakali lejua'oi na'ana elui nalihilihika'ulana omokaulele. Ahiki lo'a'aku ikaua'ia me ni'au. Ikamole okapai'aina. Aloha nui loa kakoa'pa'oo. It is with great appreciation and humility that we welcome you to Hale'olelo, home of Kahak'ula o'ke'elikolani, College of Hawaiian Language here at UH Hilo. Oka'ale ke'ia okako no'oko'kona mau'olu'olu. Mahalo nui loa. Ova'no o'ka'iu Kimura, Director of the College, and it's an honor to support your community and board meetings here in East Hawaii. This college of ours, kakoe, is honored with the name of Princess Ruth Kanahu'a'ua Ke'elikolani, granddaughter of Kamehameha Ekahi. She was a staunch advocate for our language and culture. Although as an ali'i, she had been educated in English, she insisted on using our language at all times and required non-Hawaiian businessmen to address her in Hawaiian. Our language is the fabric from which our cultural identity has emerged, and here at Kahak'ula, we aim not only for fluency and excellence, but we also seek to serve as a piko, where olelo hava'i can be elevated and spread as a vibrant living language within families, communities, and society as a whole throughout the pa'aina. This is a major kuliana requiring generational commitment and effort. Okay, kalamai, the au'au eni'hana. Please indulge me for a little bit, as I'd like to give a little bit of historical context to underscore the significance and challenges of the work that lays before us. During our monarchy, Hawaiian was the dominant language of government, commerce, education, and society. It remained the language of the land until the overthrow in 1893 and the ban on olelo Outside of Ni'au, our kupuna born before 1920 were at large the last primary speakers of Hawaiian. When they were children, they used their language at home and in their communities. Once they entered school, they were punished for speaking their mother tongue and subject to psychological humiliation that sought to incalculate a belief that everything Hawaiian was inferior. The suppression of Hawaiian was a policy of the federal government that affected all native peoples of the United States. It led to the loss of Hawaiian in descendants of those last primary speakers of Hawaiian, who were the kupuna of our families. Prior to becoming a territory at the turn of the century, Hawaii once approximately 90% of, once had approximately 90% of its population using olelo hava'i as the common language. Native Hawaiians were most universally literate in Hawaiian and were the most literate ethnic group. By the 1980s, however, this number plummeted to just 0.21% fluent speakers throughout Hawaii pa'aina. What's more, native Hawaiian educational achievement also plummeted. These pictures here featured in this slide are of kupuna, native-speaking kupuna, who were part of a core group that was critical to establishing the olelo hava'i reclamation movement. In the late 1970s and early 80s, a dedicated group came together to address the urgent need to revitalize our language. My uncle Larry Kimura testified at the 1978 Constitutional Convention advocating for Hawaiian language and educational provisions. Led by delegate John Wahai, those ideas were championed and codified in the revised constitution. In 1978, Hawaii became the sole state with an indigenous language recognized as official in its constitution and further requirements that the language be promoted. And I want to pause and take some time to recognize and mahalo and honor those who are seated here that were a part of those years that came together to discuss the critical state of our language and put action to their concern. So my uncle Larry Kimura, Kawanoi Kamana, Namaka Rollins, and Tila Wilson, all who are still here at the college and Ahapun'aleo. In 1982, shortly after OHA had been organized after the Constitutional Convention, the Board of Trustees hosted Dr. Tomati Reedy of the Office of Ma'udi Affairs. Dr. Reedy made sure that his colleagues here, that as he presented before OHA on the recently-established Kohanga'aleo language nest, so he made sure that his colleagues seated here were a part of these discussions together with OHA. Within a few short months, the Ahapun'aleo was established to operate similar language nests in Hawaii. Larry was the first president of the Ahapun'aleo, and Kawanoi continues to serve today as its president. The foundation of the Ahapun'aleo and the Hawaiian language revitalization movement is based in a very simple idea: immerse young keiki in the language, engage families to speak and learn alongside their children, and return the language to the homes. From there, you can affect society. An educational pathway has been established to achieve this goal, and OHA would be among the first to provide support. When pun'aleo began, it was actually still illegal to use olelo hava'i in education. Ahapun'aleo led the effort to change the law that banned olelo hava'i in education. After a three-year battle, the law was changed in 1986, 40 years ago, come next year. However, the battle was not over with the passage of the law. The following fall, the Department of Education did not open any schools taught through Hawaiian, yet our pun'aleo keiki were ready to enter kindergarten. So the Ahapun'aleo decided to open a kindergarten here in Hilo, declare it as a public kindergarten, and pay for it using its own meager resources. In doing so, the board of the organization, teachers, and parents risked arrest in order to support the continued educational pathway through olelo as a public right. The next year, the Ahapun'aleo and the Department of Education came together to form an agreement to move the program called Papa Kayapuni Hawaii into the Department of Education. UH Hilo faculty were board members of the Ahapun'aleo, and they played and continue to play a crucial role in supporting the Ahapun'aleo's efforts to establish total immersion schools and create curriculum resources. The vehicle was the Hale'ikuamau Curriculum Center. Larry and other colleagues of his, champions of the language, moved to Hilo to create resources for families and schools. They brought together their resources, recordings of our native speakers through interviews and the work that they did with kupuna, to create new words to support these new immersion classrooms. Special support for teachers statewide was also provided. In 1994, OHA provided funds to the Ahapun'aleo to create a model total Hawaiian language site called Ke'kula Onavahi Okulani Opu'u to work with the Hale'ikuamau and growing programs. Today, Navahi Okulani Opu'u is the largest total Hawaiian language campus in the state and the largest total native language school throughout the United States. Then, in 1996, OHA joined to work on to new milestones. First, it provided funds to start the first Masters of Arts for Hawaiian or any indigenous language of the United States, and it also partnered with UH Hilo faculty to provide a study for the legislature that explored the creation of Hawaiian Language College at UH Hilo. UH administration at the time were not supportive of this idea, concerned that it would increase operating budgets and administrative oversight. However, the legislature was persuaded to establish the college at UH Hilo due to the commitment of OHA and the nonprofit Ahapun'aleo to move this idea forward. To overcome the opposition of the UH system, the legislation passed a bill and put a freeze on future funding for the college and included a commitment from OHA and Ahapun'aleo to move the college forward under those conditions. The new college was established with Navahi Okulani Opu'u as its laboratory school and a teacher certification program taught totally through Hawaiian, another first for hava'i and the US. We are grateful for OHA's long history of support. Current OHA support funds, mahalo nui loa to your budget for this biennium that approves support for our teacher certification program and supports aspiring teachers in the undergraduate programs as well. This map here shows Hawaiian medium and immersion schools across the state. Currently, there are over, well, there are 33 Kula Kayapuni and 12 pun'aleo sites throughout the state. There are, however, over 75 teacher vacancies that exist throughout these campuses, and with your continued support, we can continue to develop qualified educators to fill these roles. Our teacher education program, Kahua Va'ola, is the largest Hawaiian immersion preparatory program in the state. OHA has been a vital partner in this movement, like I've said, and I want to restate, together with these Hawaiian language consortium partners since 1978, establishing partnerships, codifying provisions for olelo hava'i advancement. Our combination of Hawaiian, our Hawaiian nonprofit Ahapun'aleo and the Autonomous University College Kahak'ula with OHA, the state's entity responsible for native Hawaiians, has made Hawaii a world leader in language revitalization. In addition to our many direct educational programs from infant toddlers through now to PhD, we have other important initiatives within our Ku'ikahi Consortium. We also have the Emilua Center, that is an outgrowth of this college developed in order to create a fully bilingual, first Native American language bilingual science center throughout the US, but also remaining grounded and local here with our olelo and our worldview as its foundation. It not only creates a space outside of the classroom for families to interact through olelo, but also creates opportunities for shared interactions and new knowledge generation. The Hale'ikuamau mentioned earlier has expanded to become the largest source of curriculum materials and language resources for any indigenous language, and it includes online resources like dictionaries and archives of native speakers sharing their ku'ane'ike and with our kayaulu. There are over a million hits a month of the, on these resources online that are hosted by the college. Our educational initiatives have led to a resurgence of speakers. These efforts have continued to contribute, kalamai, to a reclaiming of our language, such that we are now seeing new generations of speakers choosing olelo hava'i as their language. In 2024, the census showed that 32,000 people identified as olelo hava'i speakers, approximately 2.29% of our current population, a significant increase from the 1980s. This is especially significant given the rapid acceleration of information and technology that impacts us globally. We're also supporting language use not only in this formal pre-K through to PhD Hawaiian medium education pathway, but we're also pushing for olelo hava'i existence in domains outside of the classroom in order to support our growing and upcoming generations. We have partnered with media experts, with the government, with science centers, science industries and endeavors in order to help reclaim these spaces for our olelo hava'i. In addition to supporting Kahua Va'ola, this year's biennium budget will also support our critical work in new language creation needed to articulate through a contemporary world. Mamaka Kayao is a dictionary that we published that houses over 10,000 new words. It is contributed to by a committee, the Lexicon Committee chaired by Larry, who reconvened for the first time in over eight years this past weekend to create more than 800 new words that will soon be published. These new words make it possible to move Hawaiian language into the next, into the contemporary world while remaining anchored firmly to the traditional language with its constant reference to the core native Hawaiian worldview and values. The legislation that established our college also articulates our need to outreach to other indigenous communities, including our Polynesian ohana throughout the Pacific. Most recently, we engaged with all of you in Tahiti, meeting with the French Polynesian Language Commission and educational leaders convened by OHA in order to discuss the states of our languages. In the late 1980s as well, the college was formed. The college, together with Ahapun'aleo, helped to work on a national front in order to create protection for Native American languages throughout the country. And in 1990, the Native American Language Resource, Native American Language Act was passed by Congress, which provides provisions to support all of our Native American languages. Hawaii helped to lead that charge to ensure the protections of our precious languages.
One minute, Ka'iu.
And coming to almost end close. Following, in addition to working with other Native American language communities and advocacy at the federal level, in 2023, Congress passed and supported the establishment of the first Native American National Native American Language Resource Center, of which Kahak'ula here at UH Hilo is the lead entity that is standing up this inaugural resource center in order- in order to better support our Native American languages and provide resources and training that help meet the needs of our Native American language communities where they're at. And so that is all, again, being led in partnership with all of our consortium partners here and also with your continued support. So where do we go from here? This is a rendering of a project that is scheduled to start construction next year. We are in the process of planning a brand-new Punaleo site. We've named it Punaleo Moka'ulele because that's the name of this area. But again, working with government officials and pulling together as a community to advocate for more classroom spaces that support our families seeking to return Hawaiian to their homes. This facility will house up to eighty students, keiki, and it will be a direct laboratory school of this college as well, providing training space for future teachers, administrators, curriculum, et cetera. We have also developed a conceptual plan to expand our physical capacity to support our programmatic growth. And I want to mahalo our state legislature, which trustee Kahele is very well aware of, that provided support for us to come up with some conceptual renderings for future expansion that will support more resource development through the Halekuamau, more community gatherings and discussions around language and language advocacy, all to be housed right here on campus at UH Hilo. So in closing, right, we always keep in mind that the plans that we make now are not for us, but rather for the Pua or the future generations to come. Building on the foundation our kupuna gave us, they have always taught that us, that the hanau'na, or the generations to come are those whom which we plan for. Hele'ou mahalo palana oleke'ya ya'oko ekoke'ya mo'aukala okako. While there is still much to accomplish in realizing our language as a living entity in our own homeland, our partnership and advocacy can help us overcome challenges and achieve greater advancements for our language within families and communities. By nurturing our language, we strengthen our identity and pave the way for a vibrant cultural future. Mahalo nui ya'oko.
Mahalo, mahalo, Kaua, for that presentation. Trustees, any ques- yes, mahalo. Trustees, we will have an opportunity later on in our agenda where we have an action item that helps to formalize and reestablish our commitment with the college and statutory obligations that have occurred previously. But trustee, kina, your hands up.
Thank you, Chair. Mahalo, Ekio. It was a wonderful presentation, and your Olelo no'ea was so apt that there's much more to do, but you've come a long way already, so I congratulate you. Can you tell us, in what ways has OHA funding actually helped to produce some of the measurable results that your program has?
So, I have my.
Just a few.
Way of my name, but for starters, OHA funding has directly, directly supported the college in standing up our master's program, which is now fully operational and successful. It has also provided financial support to the Ahapunaleo. OHA has purchased the land and the facilities of which our laboratory school, Ke'kula Onavahi Okulani Opu'u resides at, and transferred that to the Ahapunaleo. OHA has also helped to support through various different grants, scholarships, and family event, events that have supported Olelo Hawaii in our community and for our families. Those are some of the initial funding examples I can think of.
Well, that's all very great to hear. Mahalo.
Ekino.
Trustees, any more questions? Okay, here and on, thank you so much, Kaua.
Mahalo.
Okay, our last presentation will be a presentation by Vaika Consulting. And Vaika will be presenting on their proposal for geothermal development on Hawaii Island. And presenting in front of the board today will be former OHA trustee, Leo Malama Solomon, as well as Cavehi Correa and Ryan Matsumoto. Lehu, do you have anyone sign up to speak on this agenda item?
Yes, our first speaker is Bronson Ozama.
Aloha, Bronson.
Anai'ke aloha kakko. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you.
Bronson, Bronson. Also, for all, anyone that's going to speak today, the audio is not, it's at its max. And so I am talking loud here, so you can all hear me, but need to do the same so everyone can hear you, and that goes for our trustees and everyone that's speaking into the mic today. So please do that, so everyone in the back can hear. Thanks, Bronson.
Thank you so much, Chair Kahele. Still testing the audio a bit of how loud I have to be, okay? Sounds like we reached the point. Just, mahalo anui. Just speaking in opposition to geothermal, I think there's a little bit of, at least from me and my perspective, there's concerns, not only for this island, but when we're dealing with these geotechnical issues, let's also face it that this is also an island that's extremely vulnerable to the cataclysmic landslides that have happened on the previous islands too. So I understand there's a need for energy. I think there's alternative things that we can pursue on DHHL lands and various others that can provide economic sustenance for our people while still not putting an imperative on the environmental impacts that could occur. And, and again, there's so little that we understand in terms of even for those, even within those understandings of that worldview. But I'm very concerned about how this would impact us in the long run. I think it's very telling when the last eruption also occurs at a previous geothermal site as well. So just having that opposition. Mahalo.
Lehu, anyone else?
Yes, we have two more speakers. The next speaker is Terry Napiahi.
Terry Napiahi. Aloha, Terry. I also want to make the distinction that your testimony is on this particular presentation because we will have community concerns at the end when it may also be related as well. So try keep your comments to the presentation that is before the board. Aloha, Terry.
Aloha mai.
Aloha.
I think it's appropriate to, to pule before, so I'm just going to say mahalo, mahalo. Kia ku'a and au ma'aku'a to be in this presence of our council this morning. Terry Napiahi, representative of Ohana Napiahi Wahapele Kiave Ma'ohili Ke'ka'ula. I am a representative of my ancestors here today to speak in behalf of my family that has roots here on this moku. I'm not going to palu what you already know about geothermal because of the fact that you have history, historical information in the state of Hawaii of fifty years of opposition. Today, I come to you, not telling you anything about geothermal, except asking one question. Two, do you endorse geothermal on this moku or any other island? And two, do you plan on supporting DBED and DHHL with their proposals to do geothermal in the state of Hawaii? And if I can't get that today, can you give me thirty days to answer my question?
We're not going to answer that questions now, but we will get back to you.
So in thirty days, you will give me this question?
We will get back to you with your answers. I can't tell you thirty days, but we will get back to you with your answers.
So you can't give it to me now?
No.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Next presenter or next person to testify?
Last speaker is Kauanoe Case.
Kauanoe Case, welcome.
Aloha, great to see you again.
Aloha.
Like we were just here.
Yes, we were. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Aloha mai. Mahalo for having us today to speak on such things as geothermal and anything else that we were concerned about last night. I am here today just to be a part of this space, to be present, number one. Sometimes I'm not always sure what I need to say to you because that's my vulnerability and my honesty. But I am here to be present, and I do want to just ask that we pay attention to all voices equally because there are opposition in this geothermal production and operations, planning and proposals for exploratory drilling, especially on DHHL, possibly other lands, maybe there's private investors. We don't really know the extent to what this is, but I'm just wanting to be here to ask of you folks to please listen to our voices equally because that's just and right. We want to advocate that you folks also look at what our future is when we look at what the capacity of our Hawaii can actually hold for the next generations. We're not just looking at a production and operation that's going to be supplying an X amount of power and an X amount of, you know, less burden for the suffering of our people because that's also why I've been coming to these meetings because I do work in the mental health profession and I do see the dynamics of the impacts that are, that are occurring because of generational trauma that's trickled into modern-day trauma and what we are observing in the work on the frontline, working with our mental health. We do have issues with disconnect. We do have issues with, with, you know, trying to have our people be able to be present in these things. But how can they be present? How can we all be present if all of these issues like these and such are such at such a high capacity without the trauma being addressed? There is trauma involved in these decision-making, okay? And we need to be sure that those kinds of factors are being done in CIA's, in all of these EISs that you folks will probably be a part of, which Vaika and whoever else who is going to be developing will have to present and have to be approved. And we're just asking that proper CIS, CIA assessments, cultural impact statements will include the mental health portion of what is being damaged upon our people because I see the suffering every day, and I'm actually living a lot of that with our people. But I still show up, and I'm showing up today to just, there's so much I would like to ask. But if there's anything that these two minutes will allow me, or three, or I don't even know how much time I have to speak, and I don't want to take away from everybody else. And I just want to say that this is very important, and I really would like you folks to be a precedent for all state, for all other departments, for all other government entities, for all other corporations and developments to demand that in these CIA's, EISs, that the cultural impacts to include proper cultural impacts on the mental health and the psychosocial impacts on our people. And if you folks could do that, I think we could have decisions that are actually being mindful of those things because a lot of us are hurting. So I thank you. Mahalo.
Aloha, Kauanoe. Thank you. Okay, at this time, the chair recognizes Vaika Consulting on their presentation. You have fifteen minutes on geothermal development on Hawaii Island.
Yeah, thank you. Mahalo nui. I was hoping that perhaps we could have shared our mana'o before we had those remarks. But I, because I feel very strongly that in our mana'o, that these remarks have been addressed, these concerns. And I'm a very strong, I've been a fifty-year, fifty-year person, very strong in advocacy for the development of geothermal energy because it is part of our sovereign rights as native peoples. And it's all within my testimony. I won't go through it because I want to save time for the actual presentation. But I want to reassure the audience that Vaika's position, and I'm a very strong political advocate for Vaika, because this is the only time that we have an organization that has come forward to give us what I feel is critical to our future, the native-to-native model. And this native-to-native model was developed when my colleague, Millie Lanitras, former trustee, when she served as a civil rights attorney in the United Nations, and she was actually there to make the recommendations of how do you address the indigenous people's rights in the Pacific? Because at that moment, we were being bombed, like Tunisia, Tahiti, okay? You know? And it was through her efforts that she came up with this native-to-native model that would ensure that our native people will be part of the governance in the future development of any of our sovereign rights, which includes geothermal energy. And with that, trustees, I have been a strong supporter, not only as a, as a citizen. My Ohana genealogy goes back to Kamehameha the grade on my father's side. This is really my moku, my mother, Beamer, all from Hilo. And of course, and I've been a strong supporter when I served my thirty-five years in the Hawaii State Senate to bring geothermal energy to give us, the Hawaiian people, as well as the public, our economic sovereignty in terms of energy and our homeland. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
This time, I'd like to turn the presentation over.
Right.
All right.
Aloha, hi, Kakayaka trustees and chair. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. I'm here today representing Vaika Consulting. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Can you hear me now? Hello? I'm here today representing Vaika Consulting to share about a historic opportunity, one that honors our kupuna while securing our future. Today, we have the chance to honor the power of Pele and the volcano in a new way, turning geothermal energy into Hawaiian sovereignty, economic stability, and generational wealth for the Lahui. This isn't just another energy project. This is a Native Hawaiian-led path to energy independence where we control the development, we benefit from the returns, and we protect our cultural values every step of the way. Today, I'm asking OHA to invest five million dollars to secure a position as a founding partner in what will become a $275 million to $750 million geothermal project, one that will generate five to ten times your investment over thirty-plus years while creating hundreds of jobs and dramatically lowering energy costs for Hawaiian families. And right now, I'd like to call up my colleague Cavehi Correa to speak, speak on additional details of the opportunity.
Before Cavehi speaks, I know you have a, there's a presentation, there's a document, right? Is that something that you want to pull up?
It's actually up on the screen, but for the sake of time, it's going to be shared with you guys electronically. And then we can, but we'll go over a majority of the details in our speaking presentation right now.
I, I do think though, if you have important information to share, you should present it, given that there's many people here, and, and it is only appropriate that we share this presentation with them, so. Yeah, that's fair. Okay.
No, I did, I did.
Thank you. Aloha, mahalo. Hello. Mahalo. Okay, thank you.
Aloha, aloha, everybody. I just want to say thank you for having us here. I understand that this is a contentious subject, and we have respect for the people in this room. I'm just asking for the reciprocated time for our position here because I'm speaking for myself, and I know economics and money is a hard subject for everybody to talk about. But I want to speak about geothermal today and the position that we have and how that does affect the Hawaiian community in general. We are already suffering in itself to pay utility bills. The cost of living is high. And so for OHA and their consideration, it's a part of the consideration because you guys receive the capital coming in from the state fiduciarily. All of the projects that you guys have in terms of funding comes from somewhere, investments. And so I just want to say this out loud, forty-three percent of our families report difficulty paying utility bills. It is hard enough for us to stay here in Hawaii as it stands. So why geothermal? Why now? What does that look like? There you go. First, I want to say that it, there is a legal mandate. I know that everybody knows about this, but I just want to restate this. It's a hundred percent renewable mandate by 2045. The, one of the most impactful points on this slide is that we have legal ownership of that. And what does that mean? Geothermal is considered a mineral under the state law, and minerals are assets to the ceded land trust, which means they belong to the public and specifically to the Native Hawaiians. We have a responsibility to make our energy renewable regardless, and geothermal is the only baseload capacity that can help our people. only baseload capacity that can help our people, not only in Hawaii, but the state. What does that mean for OHA in terms of the structure, the classifications? And what does that mean for your organization? It means advocacy. It means position. It means the entitlement that comes with the geothermal resources. And I think New Zealand provides an excellent example of this and what it does for their community. And I know that in Hawaii, we had really bad first examples of this, but it was not native Hawaiian-led. And if Hawaiians lead things, I know it's going to be done the right way. What does this bring? It brings economic stability because in Hawaii, for a family of four to live comfortably, you have to be making $200,000 plus. Who makes that now? Not me. I can barely afford to live in my own home. What does this do for us as a Kako? What does that do for OHA? It provides opportunities to help the programs that need to be funded without providing economic, I want to say, reinvestments. And so there are many, many positives that can happen if done correctly. And I'm telling you, if native Hawaiians don't lead this, we're going to have another opportunity from the state that is not from here, that will come in here and will have the capacity to fulfill the obligations that the states are requiring and geothermal is the only way. There is a difference in this model. It is native-to-native difference and this has been developed, as Auntie Malama has stated, by Auntie Millilani Tras. And what does this do? It provides an economic benefit to the people in its community. And as long as I've lived here, I have not seen any economic buildup from any of the other companies that are not owned from Hawaiians, that are not owned locally. So this is a consideration here. Now, Waika Consulting is a community-based leadership and we're just asking for OHA to be a partner in the pursuant of a renewable resource that we own. A part of this goes to the sustainability and everybody knows that I'm about economic sovereignty and it goes to keeping our Hawaiians here in Hawaii. And so the next slide is actually going to be handled by Ryan Matamoru. Ryan, thank you so much, everybody.
As we continue to go through the presentation, I just wanted to kind of speak on Waika and Waika's experience. We are the only native Hawaiian-owned company with the technical and delivery experience, both raising capital and delivering a commissioned power station. We believe strongly, though, that you need a holistic approach in order to be successful in the development opportunity, which is a combination of both technical expertise and a prioritization of cultural values. We really believe strongly that as we move forward, we've identified all of the risk factors and have identified and proposed mitigation strategies to address them. So as we continue on in the presentation, we've identified a specific, I mean, we are interested in a project on Hawaii Island that is in the capacity of 50 to 100 megawatts, but it's all, the number actually is dependent upon the science. So in order to figure out how big of a project you can go, you have to identify the resource. There's very specific and defined steps in how to do so. The total cost is in the range of $275 million to $750 million because of the range of the size. The development timeline is five to seven years for construction. There's an exploration phase that could range from anywhere from one to three years. So roughly, you're looking at from today about a 10-year timeline before the plant is able to be commissioned. These are the four phases that I kind of had talked about, early development, project development, construction, and then ongoing operations. Here are the milestones that we've achieved to date. We've completed a development plan in partnership with the state's Department of Business and Economic Development and Tourism. We've been in communication with the county through the mayor's office in order to receive support for this project. And we've also defined the regulatory and permitting pathways in regard to what needs to be done and what permits need to be secured in order to do this environmentally responsibly. Here are some of the reasons why geothermal is one of the most attractive locally available renewable generation sources. Here's the way that we're structuring the capital and the finances. So all of this information you can review in more detail, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were able to present it here in the community. Here are the terms of the investment, the structure of the investment vehicle. All of these things, we can provide follow-ups if needed. Here's the projected returns that we've developed through our economic development plan. Yes. Okay, so the entire investment amount is $5 million. The investment is going to go into what we have defined as a special purpose vehicle and this is relating to the liability. So that's where the investment would go in and with a 5% to 10% equity position and then that is over and above the 20% royalty that is legally required by the state for any mineral as defined by the Hawaii State Admissions Act. And in regard to the special purpose vehicle structure, there's another slide later on in the presentation that describes that relationship in more detail. And then here's the projected returns. Conservative is in the brown, optimistic is in the blue. There's a projected 5 to 10x return on your investment and this is because it's an early stage opportunity, which comes with equity capturing benefits. Here is the slide I was referring to, chair. The special purpose vehicle is a limited liability partnership. That's the legal structure of the entity. OHA will be considered a limited partner along with any other potential investors that are secured. Waika is, will be the general partner, which will be responsible for the operations and the development of the project. And then the geothermal project assets is the actual power plant and the electricity that gets produced from that. And then here are some potential, here's an example of how OHA and the state and the county potentially would be able to participate in this project opportunity. And all of these are industry standard benchmarks that were verified by a third-party CPA. And then, so I just wanted to emphasize this, this project and opportunity is strategically aligned with OHA's mission. And through these five categories specifically, you know, the emphasis on the cultural integration and the protections that come with it, you know, that these are all fundamental principles of the native-to-native development model that Waika has adopted for any development that it participates in. Here are the four main risk categories that we've identified, mainly related to the resource, the cost, the financing, the permitting, community, and then the PPA, which is the power purchase agreement from the utility company. We've, you know, we love to address, we continue to address the past through early-stage community engagement. You know, we take the testimony and opinions of the community very seriously, as Kavehi had shared earlier, and we continue to develop and update our mitigation strategies in order to de-risk the project as much as possible. Here's the timeline with activities that I explained earlier. And then this is the ask in simple terms. You know, we want to, you know, we were asking you to approve the investment to support our legislative initiatives and then to lock in an early investor position that secures preferential terms and influence before the project valuation increases as we make progress on, towards the actual commissioning of the plant. Okay. And then here's, you know, once again in summary, what OHA gets as part of their investment. And then we just wanted to leave with this at the end. And then finally, to close, I would like to call up former Senator Malama Solomon.
Thank you.
So in closing, I just would like to say this, that we have already discussed this with DBED, that if we cannot embrace and adopt the native-to-native model, then we should not proceed with this project, bottom line. Because if we don't get the seat at the table in terms of the governance of this project so that we can incorporate our values, our mana'o right there, malamaaina, kuliaina, kulana, then we should not proceed. And the state of Hawaii has already been put on notice. Thank you very much for your time. Mahalo. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you so much. Trustees, do we have any questions for Waika? Nope, our presentation is done. Yes. We're going to take questions. Our time is up. Questions, trustees? Any questions? Trustee Akina, go ahead.
Thank you. This is a question for Waika. Can you very concisely tell me who Waika is in terms of its history and why it has a special position to be able to offer, broker this native-to-native arrangement?
So Waika is a native Hawaiian-owned entity that is registered in the state of Hawaii. We are a subsidiary of a company called Innovations Development Group that is the, was the company that was working in Alte Aroa on several geothermal power plant projects in partnership with the native Maori people, which is where me personally...
Ryan, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. If you're going to speak, please take your conversations outside so we can be respectful for all the presenters, especially when you come up to speak, okay? Mahalo, Ryan.
So those relationships were, that were procured through the Innovations Development Group were, is the foundation of what Waika was built off in terms of our industry experience.
So Waika is...
Is a subsidiary of Innovations Development Group, but we are, we operate and run our financials completely separate.
And who are the principals of Innovations Development?
Myself and Innovations Development Group.
Who are they?
The Innovations Development Group. Oh, okay.
Hold on, just so everyone, so everyone can hear, can you speak into the mic?
You know, I don't understand it because that was not the format that was brought to OHA for this morning.
The question from trustee Akina is who are the principals for Innovations Development Group? Please answer that question.
The Waika is the overall body. However, there's subcontracts being given out, which I have won, and that is the cultural resource research on the geothermal development. That is why the presentation was arranged to do the slideshow first and the commentary thereafter. The reason why is because OHA has an obligation with regards to minerals. Geothermal is a mineral.
We were presented that already, Millilani.
Did not, did not. Nor was it presented to the native-to-native model.
I presume my question will be answered when the proposal is presented in writing. Is that right? Okay, thank you. Mahalo.
Thank you. Trustees, any other questions?
Mahalo, Milli.
Any other questions, trustees? Okay, thank you, Waika. Mahalo.
Aloha. Thank you very much for this time.
Okay, trustees, we're now moving on to our Hana that we need to do. And the chair is at this time going to recognize the chair of the Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment Committee, trustee Galutaria. And just for those in the audience, OHA is preparing its 2026 legislative package to present before the state legislature. We have several bills that we are entertaining, being part of OHA's package, to include some bills that are not being placed before the board today as a result of the recently completed Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs Convention that passed some pretty important resolutions that OHA is looking at, including possibly in its upcoming legislative package. But what we have in front of us today, I'm going to recognize Chair Galutaria because we'll be taking final action on these items today. So Chair Galutaria, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Your Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, having met on October 29, 2025, and after full and free discussion, recommends approval of the following motions to the Board of Trustees. And this action item, BAE 2507, is a three-motion action item. Firstly, approval of the bills for OHA's 2026 legislative package include motion one, relating to island burial councils. Approve as part of the 2026 OHA legislative package, the proposed measure relating to island burial councils to amend Hawaii Revised Statute, HRS Chapter 6E. Two, number one, enable OHA to provide stipends for geographic region members of the island burial councils if it so chooses. Number two, reduce the quorum requirements for IBCs to meet and do business. And three, extend the time allotted to nominate members of the IBCs when a vacancy occurs during a council member's term, as provided in Attachment A.
Excuse me, any questions on motion one, which is relating to the island bearer councils? Final action on this to adopt in our legislative package, hearing none, roll call.
No one signed up to speak on this item. Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Lapa is excused. Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza is excused. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
And Chair Kohele?
Aye.
You have six yes votes.
Chair Galutaria?
Thank you, Chair. Motion two is relating to historic preservation. The motion is seeking to approve as part of the 2026 OHA legislative package, the proposed measure relating to historic preservation, to amend HRS Chapter 6E to effectuate a partial repeal of Act 293, which opened up loopholes in the historic review process for private projects within existing residential property or in nominally sensitive areas as provided in Attachment B. Chair?
Lehuah, any testifiers?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Trustees, discussion on final action relating to historic preservation? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka? Trustee Akina?
Aye.
Trustee Lapa is excused. Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza is excused. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
And Chair Kohele?
Aye.
You have six yes votes.
Chair Galutaria?
Thank you, Chair. Motion three, relating to the Land Use Commission. This motion approves as part of the 2026 OHA legislative package, the proposed measure relating to the Hawaii State Land Use Commission, which would amend HRS Section 205-1. Two, number one, add an additional member to the LUC who has substantial experience or expertise in the area of water resource management. And two, designate OHA as a nominating agency for existing, for the existing seat, rather, held by a member with substantial experience or expertise in traditional Hawaiian land usage and knowledge of cultural land practices, as provided in Attachment C. Chair?
Mahalo, Chair. Lehuah, any testifiers?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Trustees, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Analuwa.
Trustee Lapa is excused. Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza is excused. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Kohele?
Aye.
And trustee Akina?
Analuwa.
We have one abstention and five yes votes.
Okay, motion number three is adopted. So just for everyone in the audience, OHA has now adopted three bills that we will be including in our OHA legislative package and we want to mahalo our advocacy team, our chief advocate and their team and the administration for putting these initial three bills together that will be part of our legislative package and we continue to add to them. And so this is a good opportunity if you feel there is a particular piece of legislation at the state level that should, OHA should look at considering getting behind, that would be something to inform the board or an individual trustee. But thank you, Chair Galutaria, for your work and Vice Chair Akaka for their work on the BAE Committee. Okay, next item is Board of Trustees, action item 2513. This action item is the approval of the immediate disbursement of up to $6.1 million in Office of Hawaiian Affairs Emergency Assistance Funding to provide short... of Hawaiian Affairs Emergency Assistance Funding to provide short-term financial relief and essential support services to native Hawaiians impacted by the October 1, 2025 federal government shutdown, including Hawaii residents who are federal, civilian employees and their families, and recipients of Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program SNAP benefits, along with delegations and authorizations necessary to implement the disbursement. Lehuah, do we have anyone signed up to speak on Board of Trustees, action item 2513?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, the chair is now going to recognize our interim administrator, Summer Silva, and other members of her team to present the action item before the Board of Trustees.
Mahalo. Aloha, Nui. Mahalo, Nui, for the opportunity to present the administration's recommended path forward to provide immediate relief to our beneficiaries most affected by the federal shutdown. I will be joined later on the details of the proposal by Pony Askew. And to the extent there are other questions regarding the data that informed this proposal, we will have other staff on standby. But before I describe the proposal for you and for those in the audience, you know, I want to ground this work in the humility and the aloha that informed its development and will continue to inform its disbursement, its administration, and its oversight. We know that for many of our beneficiaries, trusting government institutions to deliver help, especially in moments of crisis, can feel intimidating and even unreliable. And yet, we're asking them to place that trust in us, and that is not something our administration or the Office of Hawaiian Affairs takes lightly. In these past few weeks, our staff and divisions have come together in ways that have strengthened our own internal capacity and our collective sense of kuli'aana. And what began as a crisis response has evolved into a kak'ol effort, one that reflects the best thinking and hard work of our program staff, our fiscal and research teams, this board's leadership, and our external partners who share our values and our mission. Because OHA acted quickly, boldly committing significant trust resources before others had stepped forward, we saw an encouraging ripple effect. Other agencies and partners joined in bringing their own tools, resources, and expertise to bear, and this allowed everyone to do what they do best and to ensure that assistance across our pa'aina was complimentary and, to the extent possible, not duplicative. It affirmed that leadership grounded in courage and aloha invites collaboration, not competition. The proposal before you today is about more than dispersing funds. Yes, it provides up to $350 in essential need support for kupuna, disabled adults, and low-income individuals who were excluded from the state's Hawaii Relief Program, and up to $1,200 in income bridge support for furloughed native Hawaiian federal workers. But behind those numbers is something deeper, an expression of kokua and kak'ol. Through this work, we've witnessed the intangibles, which are equally important in this effort. New pelina built among staff, renewed trust among partners, lessons in humility and perseverance, and a shared reminder that the strength of our lahui is measured not by the abundance we hold, but by how well we share it. Our ali'i understood that true leadership is judged by how we care for the people and the resources entrusted to our kuli'aana, and that model of servant leadership is timeless and perhaps more relevant now than ever as we navigate this challenging moment in OHA's evolving story. The action before you honors that legacy, and it ensures that relief is distributed swiftly, equitably, and with dignity, recognizing that this hardship was not of our beneficiaries' making and that our response must respect the compassion and accountability our people deserve. With that spirit, Chair, trustees, I humbly present for your consideration the administration's recommended disbursement option number one, a pono and culturally grounded and fiscally responsible path to delivering $6.1 million in emergency aid to those in greatest need. Mahalo for your guidance and your continued trust as we fulfill this kuli'aana, and I am going to invite Pony Askew to come forward to share the manner in which the recommendation was arrived at.
Thank you. And while Pony's coming up, just for those that are here, so last week, Tuesday, the Board of Trustees, or Monday, it was Monday, convened in what was a normally agendaized meeting, but realizing the severity of the government shutdown on our native Hawaiian beneficiaries, those that work for the federal government, there are five, 3,000 to 5,000 native Hawaiian beneficiaries that work for the federal government, from the TSA agents at the Hilo Airport to people in air traffic control tower to, you know, National Park, people work at National Park, also those that were being affected by the discontinuance of SNAP benefits. So we confirmed, convened an emergency meeting, and we took action on authorizing up to $6.1 million in emergency relief aid to be distributed to help those in need, and we tasked our administration a little more than a week ago to come back to the Board of Trustees today and to present three options on how we could best and most quickly execute and put into our beneficiaries' pockets this emergency relief aid. And so that is what is happening now, and the presentation that they're presenting to us so that we can make the decision on how to move forward.
Mahalo. I'm just going to go through each option that's in the action item. S, T, S, S. Okay. Mahalo.
You want to bring it up, the proposed action?
Yeah. We'll start at the bottom of page four, please.
Page four?
Yes, please. Disbursement option number one on the bottom of page four.
Scroll down to the bottom of page four, please. Item C, disbursement options, option number one. Keep going. Keep going. Okay, pause.
Mahalo. So for option number one, we're recommending to establish two relief initiatives to stabilize native Hawaiian households most impacted by the shutdown. One tailored to support native Hawaiians who receive SNAP benefits but are excluded from the Hawaii Relief Program, which is the Tanif Support and Housing Utility Payment Program.
Talk a little bit louder, Pony.
Yep. And another designed to provide an income bridge stipend for furloughed federal civilian workers earning no more than 400% of the federal poverty level. This dual initiative framework, if you could scroll up a little bit. This dual initiative framework is designed to reach those left out through no fault of their own, individuals and households who currently lack sufficient resource assistance. This targeted approach ensures pono use of trust funds, avoids duplication with existing state relief, and extends kokua to those most in need, yet least covered by current aid mechanisms. So for option number one, the recommendation is essential needs support provided to verified native Hawaiian households without children, child dependence. This beneficiary group may include kupuna aged 60 and older, disabled adults and low-income adults who receive SNAP benefits, but who are, one, excluded from Hawaii Relief Program, or, two, are awaiting delayed state or federal payments. We're recommending that there be 80% of the $6.1 million set aside for this effort, servicing approximately 14,000 individuals. They may use this money for direct stipend for food, medicine, and essential needs, and could come to them by way of check, ACH, or a debit gift card. This would provide up to $350 of relief funds. The second tranche of option one would include income bridge support for verified native Hawaiian furloughed federal civilian workers earning no more than 400% of the federal poverty level, who are experiencing a pay interruption due to the federal government shutdown and are excluded from the Hawaii Relief Program Tanif Support for Housing and Utility Payments. We're recommending a 20% tranche in the amount of 1.2 million for an approximate group of 1,000 individuals. This would include a one-time income bridge stipend up to $1,200. Would you like me to continue to option two?
On which is to provide up to 14,000 native Hawaiian beneficiaries a $350 one-time stipend that would help support the state's relief program, which is going to be providing $250 per individual. So that is the SNAP tranche, and the second tranche is 1,000 native Hawaiian beneficiaries that work for the federal government, have been furloughed, and have been out of work for the last 36 days. Tomorrow, those individuals miss their second full paycheck, and this will support those eligible individuals with a $1,200 one-time cash stipend, and that can support 1,000 native Hawaiian beneficiaries across the state. So those are the two potential options before this board. Trustees, do you have any questions? Akina?
Thank you very much. Thank you for the hard work on this project in such a short period of time. Could you tell me what the source of the funds is? And if they were available in the OHA budget, have they been repurposed, or did they have an intention from the beginning to use it otherwise?
I'd like to defer that question and answer either to Summer or if our budget chief is on call.
So the question was the source of the funds, and I'll let Summer answer that, but I believe, Trustee Akina, that the administration identified previous budget years that had unspent carryover balances. Those balances totaled $6.1 million, already appropriated budgets from previous budget years, and so that was the amount of money that was potentially made available to us. Those funds, given the authorization that the board took last week, have already been liquidated and is ready in our local bank and ready to move.
Correct. So the authority to move $6.1 million from our carryover funds into our present banking accounts in order to liquidate quickly, if this board approves, the program proposal that accompanies the allocation is already seated in our accounts, ready to move. So again, everything that Chair Kohale has just stated is correct, that the prior board, or the prior board meeting, $6.1 million allocation from carryover funds already budgeted for but not utilized, this was the aggregate amount available for emergency relief.
Thank you very much. I was aware of that already, that we do have the authority to move the funds, but I was asking what the original intention of those funds was, whether that has been repurposed.
I see. That is a more specific question. I'm waiting online to see if Ryan Lee, our interim chief financial officer, is available. We can come back to that question as soon as I get the answer, response in the team's chat.
I can wait, and I appreciate that.
No problem.
The only reason I'm asking it is I just wanted to see what we may be taking from if funds were...
Understood, and it's a reasonable fiduciary question. Thank you.
I actually have a question. Can you speak to the second piece, the income bridge support? So when I'm reading this, potentially 1,000 of our beneficiaries, we know from our research team that there are about 3,000 to 5,000 native Hawaiian federal civil service employees across the state that work in a bunch of different fields for the federal government. The proposal is to support verified native Hawaiian furloughed federal civilian workers earning no more than 400% of the federal poverty level. So if I'm working at TSA, like, do I qualify or do I not qualify? How do we put a number to that? 400% of the federal poverty level in simple terms for our beneficiaries that are watching and wondering, do I qualify or do I not qualify?
Mahalo. If you could scroll to page three, we have a table that we included in the action item that provides an easy reference to that range. Mahalo. So if you're a household size of one at 400% of the FPL, you're making approximately $72,000 a year. And then it just aggregates in the stair steps is based on household size. So we've provided this for reference, hopefully that the public will be able to access, but that's where, I don't know if that answer is for you.
Yeah, and so just so we're clear, looking at this, if you are a single individual and you are working for the federal government, and you are in a position that pays you less than 72,000 a year in annual income, and you have been furloughed.
Correct.
Whether or not you're an accepted employee, you've been having to go to work, or you have been furloughed at home since one October, you would qualify.
Correct.
Okay. And subsequently, if the household size goes up, then that number goes up.
That is correct.
You're the primary breadwinner in your family, you work for the federal government, you're married, you have a child, you have a household size of three, your income needs to be below $122,640.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, Summer, are you going to be able to get that answer for Trustee Akina? Okay, we're working on that. Okay. Before we do that, trustees, Trustee Galutaria, question?
Thank you, Chair. This is specific to, we need some clarity on the dispensation. So in the event that we approve one of the options today, do we have the bandwidth internally to do stuff like this, or are we going to get a third-party partner to actually do the
Yes, we're looking into bringing on a third-party partner to support the internal operations that we would have to assume if we were to deploy this. I think it would be far more nimble and astute of us to use a third-party partner, and we are definitely working on that.
So the process would go forward if and when we do approve the option, and then you'll go out immediately with some type of RSP?
Yes, that's correct. And to ensure that we can deploy as quickly as possible, because we understand the severity of need for our beneficiaries, we have been working diligently with council and procurement to get pieces in place considering the outcome of what happens today.
Finally, one last follow-up. In the event that everything happens today, do we have a drop-dead date on when we want this to start? If, in a perfect world, when would we want this to start?
So it is our intention, depending on the outcomes from today, for applications to be released, and intake beginning on Monday, the 10th of November.
That's a great question. Governor's plan, as was reported, and the $250 SNAP benefit, for some recipients, that will be more than what they've been receiving. For most recipients, it'll be less than what they've been receiving. The average SNAP recipient in this state is about 156,000, non-Hawaiians and Hawaiians, receive $346 on average per month. We know because of the cost of living in this state, the cost of food, it's on average $500 to $700 per month for a single adult individual to be able to survive and eat healthy and go to the stores. And so $250 is not enough. Zero is unacceptable. And so the combination of OHA's 350 and what the governor is providing can help this individual or those families, at least get them into and arrange for the next few weeks, for the month of November, with the hope that the federal government will reopen shortly. The governor's $250 disbursement is expected to start to be loaded onto recipient EBT cards by the 14th of November, that is next week. And so what we are trying to do is move heaven and earth to have our proposal moved as quick as possible, with disbursement starting as soon as Monday. What is important is, and I'm going to ask Keishon a question... What is important is, and I'm going to ask Keishon a question in a second, is to be an eligible applicant, you must be in OHA's Hawaiian Registry Program. That is easy to sign up. I believe we are doing Hawaiian Registry Program today with our beneficiary service agents. You can walk out of here with your registry card, your OHA card. But this card is, and the registry is important, because it allows an eligible applicant to not only take part in this program, but to also be a potential recipient for our sponsorships, our grants, the different programs that we offer. So if you are a Native Hawaiian, you are an OHA beneficiary, and if you want to be a part of OHA's programs and resources, you must be in our Hawaiian Registry Program. Because of that, we have experienced the highest amount of surging of OHA Hawaiian Registry Program applications in the last week. And Keishon, can you give the board an update on where we stand as of last night on Hawaiian Registry Program applicants?
Mahalo, nature. So as of last night, we have 2,746 applications to date. If you remember, after the CNHA conference, we experienced like three times the amount of volume, and this by far surpasses and eclipses that.
So 2,000?
2,746 applications received.
Okay. trustee Kaka, you have a question?
Mahalo. I'd like to ask how in which the communication will be going out to our beneficiaries so that they are aware of how they can qualify, what the process is going forward, and what that timeline would be.
So we have a, we're working closely with our communications department, and as soon as we receive the approval from the board to move forward, that comm, that comms team will work in close coordination with the vendor, who will administrate the funds. I do have an answer to trustee Akina's question as well. The surplus budget from FY '22, FY '23, and FY '24, in the core operating budget in the grants category, is where these unspent, unencumbered funds were sourced. And so they were invested in our Native Hawaiian Trust Fund portfolio, and basically we're withdrawing that amount from our portfolio in order to make liquidity available to fund this disaster relief effort.
Summer, are you saying that these funds were initially set aside to satisfy grant requests?
Correct, but unencumbered and unspent.
Okay, I just want to point out then, they were set aside originally to provide for things in our Manai Maoli Ola plan of providing long-term housing, healthcare, education, and economic development. And so we may, on a philosophical level, be making a choice to meet the short-term need at the cost of some long-term need. And that's an opportunity cost. I just want to note, we really haven't debated that at the board level, or what the role of the board should be in doing that. But I thank you for the answer to that question.
Sure. And if I may respond, consistent with our Manai Maoli strategic priorities, the inability to put food on a table for a family necessarily impacts their long-term sustainability. The inability to, you know, meet rent necessarily impacts housing implications and health and all of the other holistic kind of support and services that inform our strategic plan and vision that. So I think this is actually an investment in long-term stability. It does address an immediate and very pronounced need. And the fact that we haven't yet used those funds for that kind of purpose, at this moment calling for that speaks, I think, both to the mission, the values, and the orientation of the, of the, you know, priorities and principles of the trustees that were, you know, expressed back in FY '22 through the present. And so I see more consistency with the use of the funds in this manner than I do inconsistency.
Well, thank you. And actually, I'm not saying it was inconsistent. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying this isn't good. It is good. But good things also have a price. And so we want to compare what we're doing in the immediate situation to what we could be doing in the long-run situation. They're not antithetical, I agree with you. And that leads me to, if I may share, another question that I have.
Go ahead.
Summer, when you opened up, you gave an eloquent introduction of the need, and I appreciate that, and used the word crisis. That's what we felt when we heard because of the federal funding shutdown, that people would go without food. SNAP program would end for those who depend upon it. That indeed was a crisis. But the landscape has changed, and it's changing daily, even multiple times in a day. Since then, government has gone back and forth as to whether there would be SNAP payments. And the level has been shifting. Federal courts have also intervened and limited the restrictions that could be put on. Agencies and state governments have also stepped up and supplemented the amounts, as Chair pointed out, and so forth, here in Hawaii with our governor's proclamation. So as we rapidly work to get something into the hands of the people, how do we determine whether what we're giving matches what they need? In the total, as well as in different categories of need that they have? We have many organizations attempting, as part of their ongoing mission and their ongoing work, to satisfy that. It's going to be a monumental task to make that determination.
Oh, thank you for the question. You know, we have been working in close coordination with our state agency partners, including the highest levels of leadership at the executive branch, and then also the directors of the Department of Human Services, who have complemented OHA's ability to be nimble in this moment and to meet the needs of the community faster than they can, and to supplement what they cannot cover. So we've been very intentional about finding sort of the gaps or the pukas that we can fill in coordination with, close coordination with, our sister agencies, and in close coordination with our nonprofit partners, all of whom are serving different segments of our larger Hawaii community, but none more keen or more narrowed in on the Native Hawaiian community like OHA is. So we are specifically addressing the gap needs of our OHA beneficiaries for whom priority is not, like, addressing their needs are not a priority of any other state agency department to the extent that it is our exclusive mission.
Well, I appreciate that, and I will look forward to, as the weeks go on, learning of the mechanisms that are in place in order to ensure our ability to do just that. And then finally, and I'll close with this, I know we want to make sure that the money gets to where it's supposed to go. What do we have in place on a general level to ensure that accountability?
So we, as part of the criteria for the rollout of the program, registering for the Hawaiian Registry Program, which is our ability to authenticate an OHA beneficiary status. That is a prerequisite to receiving any kind of aid coming from this program. So that will continue to be a kind of vetting, if you will.
Starting point.
And a starting point and an assurance that the funds that we are utilizing from our trust assets are going to serve the beneficiaries of that trust. So while it is an additional criteria on top of meeting some of the other criteria that was discussed that were specific to, you know, SNAP benefits and specific to being a federal furloughed employee, we are ensuring that the money that does make its way into households are making its way into households that include OHA beneficiaries.
Well, what I will look forward to is seeing what those mechanisms are to ensure that the deliverables were delivered and used as we intended.
And, yes.
And mahalo for the work you're putting into this.
Thank you. Thank you. And mahalo to the staff and to our partners all across the state.
Thanks. It's good questions, trustee Akina, and you're right. The landscape changes every day, you know, and reopening the government can't happen fast enough. I think what we do know from open source national media is that the executive branch has committed to restoring a portion of SNAP benefits to the millions of recipients across the country who receive SNAP. But because that decision was so delayed, even receiving a portion of what a recipient would have received may take, you know, after Thanksgiving or a few weeks. So even if that was turned on right now, they're not going to receive it. And we know that there are Native Hawaiian beneficiaries that should have received their SNAP benefits under EBT on the 5th of November, and those EBT cards are zero right now. And they will not receive any relief aid from the state government until latest 14 November, next week Friday. So we have to move as quick as possible, I believe, to support those beneficiaries. And I think the administration has put together a plan that can do that and start to provide that relief assistance as soon as, as soon as early next week, trustee. Thank you.
Mahalo. I'd also like to ask in the communications if this is not already included in the plan so that we have a larger reach out in communications, is to reach out and include the various elected officials and bodies on the county level, the state level, as well as the federal level, as well as providing them a fact sheet in terms of what the qualifications entail and how this will be implemented? And also to include the food banks and the distribution centers? For example, I, in receiving communications calls, one of them included a legislator from the west side of Oahu, and asking that if myself and our other trustees could be available to see what is happening at these distribution centers and what is happening there and the realities that are faced when it comes to these hardships and those within households that are oftentimes not making the best decisions and how that affects the mental and physical state of the ohana. So just to give that perspective, and I really want to make sure that that reach out is as widespread as we can in a timely fashion as we are able to, as well as in the post-part of this, have it where it is implemented that we are receiving feedback to that those that are receiving this kokua, so that we know what is working and what is not working, and how it has helped the individual and/or the ohana. Mahalo.
Mahalo, trustee Kaka. Trustees, any other discussion? Any other questions for the administration?
Very quickly.
Trustee Galutera?
I'm listening to this conversation, it's very, very interesting. Appreciate all of the dialogue. We're not here to politicize hunger. We're here to seize the moment. We can only speak to what we're responsible for, and that's the lahui. The administration has been very candid, and they've come up with two options. Their recommendation is option one, and I'm not sure whether we have anything else to discuss. So I would like to either make a motion to accept the recommendation, or call for some kind of question, and somebody else can make a motion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve disbursement option one, as further described in this action item, for the disbursement of up to $6.1 million in OHA emergency assistance funding for short-term relief and essential support services to Hawaii residents across two OHA beneficiary groups. And it outlines it in the recommendation. I'm not sure whether we need to do that.
Trustees, we have a motion on table to adopt action item board of trustee number 2513, and the administration's recommendation for option one. Do we have any discussion? Here, Ano Rokal.
Trustee Ahuna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Analuwa.
Trustee Alapa is excused. Trustee Galutaria?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza is excused. Trustee Wahee?
Yes.
Chair Kahali?
Aye.
And trustee Akina?
Analuwa.
We have one abstention and five yes.
Motion passes. Mahalo, Anu'au to the administration. Lahui, we're coming to help. Mahalo. We're now moving on to our second action item on the agenda. It's Board of Trustee 2514. This is to authorize an agreement between Kahaka Ula Okeeli Kalani, the College of Hawaiian Language at the University of Hawaii at Hilo, and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, OHA, to reaffirm and strengthen OHA's statutory obligation to support the college, consistent with Act 315 of Session Laws 1997 and Act 226 Session Laws of 2001. This agreement formalizes OHA's recommitment to sustaining the college's mission of Hawaiian language and culture renewal. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
Yes, we have one person. We have Kainoa Azama.
Kainoa Azama. Welcome.
Kalamei, I think I was actually registered for the previous item, and then I might have miswrote the number for this one. One thing I'll add to the legislative, I know you guys just voted on it. On and off on its own, okay. Again, we got to go back to ancestral intelligence, not artificial intelligence. So that's a real AI. But anyway, so kind of going back to the legislative priorities, one thing that I think really needs to be reflected, especially this time, because as part of the discussion, is we're responding to symptoms. But ultimately, all of these symptoms are because we're placed in a particular pond, which is within the United States. So one of the things that a lot of our generation has been advocating for is, when are we going to have the space and time to advocate or talk about and discuss what is the legal remedy around what we all acknowledge as an illegal overthrow?
I'm sorry, we're not talking about that? We're talking about our action items. So you got to keep it specific to this, otherwise you can do it in community concerns.
Yeah, sorry, I just mis-signed, I meant to sign up for the legislative priorities. So that's why I meant my, yeah, I passed. But I just wanted to add that in for future references, you folks could deliberate on future, as future legislation.
Mahalo, thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha. Caillou, can we get Caillou to come up? Yeah. So trustees, we have action item, board of trustee 2514 in front of us. And part of this action item is also part of the presentation that the college presented to the board previously. And maybe Caillou, you can speak to the previous legislation that in the late '90s and early 2000s created the college and OHA's, I guess, legislative role in that as required by the legislature? Because at the time, the university system did not support establishing a college here of Hawaiian language at UHilo, nor supported the funding of that college. And so put that kuliana on OHA, who, as you informed us before, stood steadfast with the early pioneers of the College of Hawaiian Language here at UHilo to make this possible. And the legislature made sure of that commitment. So can you speak to that briefly?
Yeah, so this was in 1997 that this legislation passed. Oh, kalamei. That this legislation passed, and like you said, it was done outside of the normal internal UH system processes for reasons of concern for standing up a graduate program outside of the Manoa campus. In that, I think there was a lot of effort, and I actually would like to look to Navaka or Pila perhaps to come and speak to that, because they were actually in the throes at that time, working with different legislators and different community supporters to make that happen. But part of the big push was to help realize the state's mandate to support Hawaiian language revitalization, education, training, and resources. And this being a university of Hawaii state entity who has that as its mission and purpose, this law or act turned into a law codified that purpose and that relationship that this college has to this state's priority. And so OHA stepped up to be a part of that, together with Aha'Pun'Analeo, the nonprofit, in order to ensure the state's commitment to furthering the advancement of our Ola'Hawai'i.
Yeah. And, you know, trustee Akina, you asked that question earlier about how has OHA supported this college? And it, an extension of this college is Navahio Kalani'opu. And in the mid-1990s, OHA's multimillion-dollar investment in the early establishment of Navahio purchased the land under the current campus today, which I don't know if there were other funds or it was only OHA funds, but. Esme?
Aye, okay. Aloha, Kahaka. Mahalo. Mahalo. Kia'a'ana mai. Ova'ona makaralas. Thank you so much. I am. I am Navaka'Allans, and I was there in 1997. Okay, we're going to make them high because we tall. Yes, so we were both there, kauanoe. And we were there at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board Meeting in 1994. And it was their first unanimous vote by the board to grant Aha'Pun'Analeo the $2 million we needed to purchase... Wait, what is today? Ke'kula'au Navahio Kalani Opu'u. It was the former Henry Opukahia. You know that school with the... Nobody else had rug on their gym, but that one had. And we were looking for a place. We needed to have our students, our children, have their school. And the year prior to that, we were at the Hilo Downtown Third Floor Unemployment Office Building with the children in grades five, six, and seven. We had established Navahio already with the Ohana, Mrs. Ahuna, that gave us permission to name our school Ke'kula'au Navahio Kalani Opu'u after her grandfather, Joseph Navahio. So these are all the historical and so... And we came and we found a place. Who sells us? We were looking for a school. Who would sell a school? There's no schools being sold at that time. We went all around. We were going here and there, everywhere, looking for a school.
On her red Bronco.
And that school came up.
Japanese church, any place that could possibly have a facility.
To have a school for our children. They were now entering intermediate, going to be into high school. We had no place to go. We had no place to go. And so we went to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We had, we found our place. And we wanted to... Actually, we went there to ask to get us a loan. We were asking for a loan.
Yeah, we're asking for a loan, and then they said... Oh, two mics, okay. So we went, and we sat there, Navaka and me. And we gave our spiel. And we asked, could we get a loan to purchase this property for $1.2 million? And Clayton...
2.1.
2.1. 2.1 million dollars. And Clayton, he was the chairperson. And they looked at us, and the question was, do you have a financial advisor, Aha'Pun'Analeo? And we looked at each other, and we said, no, we do not. They threw up their hands. They thought that we were pupule for asking them in that way. But I think at that time, we already had gained a reputation for the Pun'Analeo for doing what we did in the past years. Even establishing the preschool, establishing the laws, going to the legislature and doing the groundwork. We had familiarity with people on the board. And in that, after a few, well, quick discussion, they decided...
Mr. Kimura was also, they were all there, those are old.
Yeah. Ottawa Center. They agreed that they would actually grant us the funds. So nui, ka mahalo. Ya'oko. Kapo'ya'pau. Ma'mua. Inohho. Ma'oha. No'kapono kalahui. Kapono na keiki hawai'i. Iha'ana i'ke'ala ma'ava. Ma'ka'makaiki umikuma'iva. Kanai'iva kumaha. That we have Navahio today in Ke'au with almost 600 students today. So mahalo nui ya'oko apauloa.
Aye, make it with mahalo.
Mahalo for that context. And for our trustees, and maybe Kayu can come up just to speak to this one last part. And so in our, and for the audience, in our most recently adopted biennium budget, working with our Mana'i Ma'uli'ola educational team, the OHA Board of Trustees approved $620,000 over a two-year fiscal biennium, of which $300,000 each fiscal year will go to support some specific programs here at the college, including Haleko Mo'o and the further expansion of the vision of what this college continues to evolve to be. So can you speak to that for a second?
Yeah, so thank you very much. Mahalo pu'no'ke'ya'kako'au Anamai'ma'ke'ya'biennium. These funds will support our teacher certification program and candidates that are seeking to get certified through Hawaiian medium, Hawaiian immersion education training. As I mentioned earlier, there's a great need. Over 75 teachers' vacancies exist. That's just vacancies. It doesn't include people who are teaching in our schools and doing it no'ke'alo'ha, and they have a mak'ou'kau but perhaps haven't actually gotten certification, which ultimately can help them with their pay scale, et cetera, but also just be equipped for the needs of the classroom. So part of these funds will go to supporting scholarship for students in our graduate certificate program as well as aspiring educators who are coming up in the undergraduate programs. There's not a lot of direct... We need teachers who are mak'ou'kau, ma'oka'au'la'Hawai'i, trained completely through Ola'Hawai'i and prepared to manage and operate their classrooms and the various content that they teach through Ola'Hawai'i. So the undergraduate program is critical to establishing that level of fluency required for the classrooms. That fund will also support our own faculty and staff going out to the schools once students graduate or get out of the academic coursework of the teacher certification program. We then keep in-service training and outreach to them in the schools as they're getting their practical experience. So this will support those kinds of activities. The other half of the budget will support the continued development of new language as required in our schools and as required in just our daily living as life evolves and adapts and changes. Like I mentioned, our lexicon committee hasn't met in over eight years. And so they just met this past Saturday. These funds will help support more gatherings like that where lexicon can be established, adopted, as well as delivered through various outputs, like our online dictionary, printed dictionaries, other resources. It'll also help further sustain online archives and databases that we've already created that house the voices of our native speakers that are no longer with us so that our generation and those younger than us can continue to hear the language of those native speakers born pre-1920. So it's really, really important work. We also are, right, looking into the space of where AI is going and artificial intelligence and ensuring that we can participate in those activities to the extent that it helps to protect and advance our language. And so that is a very scary yet developing space that our children are demanding us to see how our language will thrive through those new platforms. And here is the chair of our lexicon committee, Larry Kimura.
I just wanted to add on to that is the... You know, we were a very strong nation. So we have a huge repository of our language, mostly in documentation in written form, but we also have audio as well. It's a big job to get to, to manage, to be able to prepare that kind of raw material for today's technology. And that's a shame because it's sitting in our repositories, as you know where they are, maybe, yeah. And as I said, we were a country for over 70 years with our language being documented in all realms of use, all in social, in government, wherever it was being conducted, our country as an independent country. So we have a strong repository of language, which is very, very important for us to use today, especially as we are in this means of revitalization. I am very happy to know that our families are demanding that their children be educated through the medium of our language. But as we just heard, we do not have enough qualified teachers. So the main source of getting teachers are through such programs that we have available through Kahua Viola, our teaching, our teacher certification program in Hawaiian medium education. We need to work on these things. We need to also work with our Hawaiian language curriculum development. We just can't order it online. And so we have a Haleko Mo'o Hawaiian Language Center who's mandated to participate in such work. And we have to have qualified people in current times with modern technology that we have available to keep up with what is happening. So we have all of these kinds of major work to be done to make ourselves stronger as a people through our language. Mahalo.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Akaka.
First, I want to say mahalo Anui for being the forerunners and taking on the heat to revitalize our beloved Olalomakohine. Mahalo.
Mahalo nui. Aye.
And I also want to acknowledge what a joy it has been in learning from one of your former Ha'omana to know that I can simply go online and listen to the conversations of our kupuna that you took my parents out to go visit throughout the paiaina and to hear them singing, I think it was circa in the 70s. And even to find that you were sharing of attending my baby luau.
Oh, okay.
That was a very nice surprise to come across.
Yeah, yeah. We started the Hoku'Hano'Hano' because we got too many awards at the... In 1976, at the Nani Awards. So Crash Ke'alo'ha. Crash Ke'alo'ha. And Casey Cien said, come on, you gotta, we gotta do something. And there was the Auntie Alice, I think Auntie Alice Navake'lu'ha named it, Na'Koku'Hano'Hano'.
Mahalo for empowering your Ha'omana to take on the task to bring forth from your repository and share that with everyone in the world. And with that, I also wanted to touch on the conversation piece that was mentioned when it comes to AI. So yes, we hear artificial intelligence, and we also hear ancestral intelligence. And in myself learning more about it, I know that there's some fear and concern. And at the same time, we have this technology before us. And as we know, our kupuna harnessed what was available to us and made it... We took it to the best use that we could. And I feel that part of the lesson I'm learning is that this is our language. This is our history. This is our culture. And we have to be the ones to be in the front seat and speak on this mo'olelo so that people that are interested are our own people and those throughout the world that they have the opportunity to know factual information, know exactly how it has been spoken and what... In the way, the different dialects, of course, in which that our language can be revitalized. And I look towards you all to continue in your kuliana. And I mahalo you in answering the question that I had asked you, uncle, when I called you about a year, a little more than a year ago, asking...
Aye, thank you, no.
Yeah, how can...
Kalomei.
Mahalo. How can the Office of Hawaiian Affairs within our abilities, our capabilities, our kuliana kakao'au with you? So mahalo for heeding to this call. I look forward to hearing more.
Mahalo, trustee Akaka.
Mahalo.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Galutaria.
Thank you, Chair. This is more of a statement than a question. But all of the funding is going towards programming, yes? There's a structure to deal with, too. And I just wanted to make you folks aware that there are pathways to getting capital improvement funding for the school itself. You know, and we can always meet under the tree. But a good structurally integrity of a building is important, too. So perhaps now, I know there's a lot going on, you may want to investigate how OHA can support in capital improvement. I'm just sharing that with you now, okay?
Mahalo. Trustees, any further questions? Okay. Yeah, yes, sir. Trustee Akina.
Should I start over? I move that we authorize an agreement between Kahaka'ula Oke'eli Kalani College of Hawaiian Language, University of Hawaii at Hilo, and the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to reaffirm and strengthen OHA's statutory obligation to support the college consistent with Act 315 of 1997 and Act 226 of 2001.
Mahalo, trustee Akina for that motion. Do we have anyone have any questions on that motion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa is excused. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Lindsay is excused. Trustee Souza is excused. Trustee Wahee.
Yes.
Sherkahele.
Aye.
You have six yes votes.
Motion is adopted. Okay, thank you, trustees. We are now going to move on to, I know what many have been waiting for, and that is the community concerns portion of our agenda. This is the last item on our agenda. We will not be convening in an executive session. And so at this time, the Chair would like to call the first testifier that has signed up for community concerns. We have about 20 of them at least. Chair would also like to remind those coming to testify in front of the board that keep your comments to five minutes. You have five minutes to speak in front of the board. And that we do it in a respectful way. We have staff here that will give you your 30-second warning. As well as our pow time. And first up in queue is Kalani Ke'au. Wilson. Aloha. If you want to raise that up, you can. I'd also inform that, just like myself that's talking louder than I normally do so everyone can hear me. If you'd like, not just the audience here, but the audience watching on olelo, to be able to hear your testimony, which we really want them to hear, you got to speak a little bit louder than you would normally do. But Kalani Ke'au, welcome.
Got to turn the mic on, too.
You got to push the green button. Yeah, push the button.
Aloha. Aloha, Kako. Aloha'aina, trustees for OHA. Mahalo for coming to our island. And hopefully, you guys can come more as the development of Pohakuloa starts to continue to move, especially with the governor's communication out to everyone, $10 billion. Everybody getting excited. Even though inside the legislation, I think Kai pointed out, there's a restriction of $2.5 million on any land transfer last night. So mahalo for that, Kai. And it's unfortunate, we get gaslighted at that all the time, the Hawaiians. But what I'm here to talk about is trauma, psychological, mental health. Hopefully, next time I testify, I can be introduced as Dr. Wilson. Just turned in my dissertation, getting ready to defend. I'll be the first genocide expert in the Hawaiian kingdom. And you know, when the cards is stacked up against us, when nobody believed and nobody thought, our aloha'a'aina warriors that advocated to stop bombing Koholave accomplished something that nobody thought could be accomplished. So I'd like to recognize them and our Hawaiian language founders. 1978, that was just here, that we just recognized. I'd like to recognize them and their great works to getting us here where we are. And their school is named after Navahio. Navahio fought for the kingdom, went into jail for fighting for justice, and he died. Lili'au Kalani, fighting for justice, she got jailed. Prince Kuhio, he's fighting for justice, he got jailed. My point is, just being Hawaiian, you get attacked all kinds of different ways. And it's tough to live in our islands. It's tough to raise our families because those attacks are continuing. But when I went to Washington to watch the Native Hawaiian convention, if you guys wasn't there, I swear the best two presentations was Kai's and Governor Wahee's back-to-back. Ho was kela. Because I heard a lot about the kingdom. Seemed like it was returning. Seemed like it was there already. So I want to thank you guys because that got me excited and that got a lot of the chiefs from their reservation excited. So I had a few meetings after that where we started to discuss international trade between our islands and their harbor in Tulalip, where they trade fish. So hopefully, we can trade salmon and ahii and aku. So hopefully we can trade salmon and ahii and aku internationally through our harbors. So all of this talk is all kingdom talk. And everywhere around us is the kingdom. But it seems like in order to move forward and to be okay in this system, we gotta suppress parts of the kingdom in ourselves. And that's what causes the mental illness, the mental trauma and psychological trauma, even for myself. I went through twenty years of trying to unravel, unpeel the onion of the oppression that's been over me. "Akanona e hiki au ke olelo Hawaii ke i manava, helu helu ina nupe pa olelo Hawaii apa'au. Maikamaka hiki umi kumavalu kanakolu kumaha, aiai kamaka hiki umi kumai va kanaha kumavalu." That's when I signify the extinction of the Hawaiian language, the last printed Hawaiian language newspaper. And I'm here because two thousand and seven, La Ku'oko'a was celebrated on this campus and UH Manoa at the same time with professors pulling down the American flag and just flying the Hawaiian flag. And since two thousand and seven till now, La Ku'oko'a is celebrated everywhere. Everyone celebrates La Ku'oko'a. So as Oha trustees, I would hope some sort of funding or some office be created to help support the justice in the area of the Hawaiian kingdom. Because throughout our population, as a teacher, it's growing rapidly and it's growing on fire. And we won't be able to slow it down already. And this is the children coming up, talking about La Ku'oko'a, celebrating La Hoi Hoi Ea, talking about the Hawaiian kingdom. So in closing, because I got the, I like to close with Lili'okalani's last saying. "The voice of the people is the voice of God." Can everybody repeat after me? "The voice of the people..." Oh, come on, together. "The voice of the people is the voice of God." So mahalo. Thank you, guys.
Mahalo Kalani Keo. And congratulations on almost being done with your PhD and receiving your doctorate degree.
Yep, mahalo.
Proud of you. Next the Chair like to call up Davis Price, followed by Puakase. Aloha Davis.
Aloha Kakou. Can you hear me?
You got it.
Yeah. Mahalo. First, mahalo for taking that action on the benefits for the relief for our beneficiaries. I was just in a call last week with the staff over there at Ynai Coast Comprehensive Health Center. They do kupuna meal distributions weekly. They have eleven hundred recipients on the regular. They said over the weekend it jumped by fifty percent. They saw five hundred more people in their lines. It's a significant need. And it's a reminder of the work that we all have to do. I think it's troubling when, you know, we talk about the SNAP benefits and the federal government shutdown, and I just, you know, making note of this. From an indigenous perspective, you step back and think about the fact that they've taken our land and our ability to sustain ourselves, made us fully reliant on this system, and deprived those who most need it of the resources to survive within that system. It is nothing less than a replication of termination policy, which is real policy effectuated by the federal government against our Native American relatives. So it's just something to think about as we endeavor in this work and do an analysis of opportunity costs and what it means to participate in this system. That said, the reason why I'm here, the military leases, is also relevant because we're talking about governance of resources, ability to control those resources, our inability to control those resources, the suppression of our voice for many decades when it comes to engaging with the US military. And, you know, I put forth a request, refresh your folks' memory, at a meeting last month. We came on behalf of thirty-nine organizations that issued a, Native Hawaiian organizations that issued a joint statement, calling on the governor and the US military to follow the law, to stop these premature negotiations. And we came to Oha to ask for your support, to adopt that statement, to stand in solidarity with the Lahui. So I'm here to reemphasize and repeat that request. Also, to talk about it in the context of the developments that happened this week with this letter issued by the governor, in which he's proposed a number of conceptual ideas on what he thinks would be a proper settlement with the US military for their continued use and desecration of our lands. I'm not going to provide a legal analysis right now, that's your folks' job. But I will highlight a few issues that we see with that letter. First, no community input. It's completely unilateral. Not only is he not talking to the Native Hawaiian community, he's not talking to any community, which is required by law. There's been no valuation or appraisal for what it will cost to clean up the military's toxic waste that is everywhere in Hawaii. He threw out a ten billion dollar number, arbitrary, don't know where that came from. But by all estimates in our previous experience, we know that the cleanup will probably cost far more than that. Main example, Koholave, four hundred million dollars, nowhere near clean. And we're talking about ten times the amount of land. Last point, condemnation. He's continuing to throw around this condemnation threat as if there's nothing we can do. That is wrong, that is false. At the same time, he acknowledges that he's putting forth this proposed settlement in order to avoid contentious condemnation legal challenges. So what is it? Is there going to be a contentious legal battle? Or are you going to put the cart before the horse and undermine the people of Hawaii? That is the question that I hope you folks ask. So when we talk about analysis, opportunity costs, I love it because that is exactly what we need for the military use of these lands. What are we losing in opportunity by not having control of these lands? What are we losing in opportunities by not being able to utilize these lands and generate revenue for our people? And last point, this is kind of ironic, given the presentation that was done earlier. But, you know, this stems from a conversation I had with Oha's chief advocate in the hallway the last time I came to the meeting last month. And Pele Defense Fund came up. And Pele Defense Fund, obviously, the legal battle over Wa'akele'opuna, over geothermal thirty years ago, forty years ago. But in that case, the Hawaii Supreme Court held that beneficiaries of the public land trust can move to preemptively, call for a preemptive injunction if a land transaction will be in fault, will be in a violation of the public land trust kuliana. So can you folks please dedicate some resources to digging into this analysis? So there's an add-on to my request now, our request. That's to stand with Lahui and also please dedicate the resources to do the legal analysis and responses necessary at this time. Mahalo.
Mahalo Davis. The Chair now recognizes Puakase and will be followed by Leilani, Auntie Leilani Lindsay Ka'apuni.
Don't start my five minutes yet. Aloha. My name is Puakase. I'm from Pu'kapu, Waimea, and Mauna Kea is my mountain. My kupuna are Kanakamauli from Avini and Niuli'i Kohala'akau, though I'm born and raised in Waimea. I've been involved as a petitioner in multiple hearings and with thousands of others, many of them here today as a protector for Mauna Kea for the past fifteen years. I went to Pu'uhulu-hulu this morning to read my testimony to the Mauna, as I always do, and I was reminded to trust the Mauna, the Ika' kupuna, and the foundation laid before us. And then I drove here. For Hawaii Island, what is impacting Mauna Kea is threefold. The building of the TMT, which by the way would never fit on any decommissioned areas on the summit, the military leases at Pohakuloa and exploration of geothermal, possibly at Humu'ula on DHHL lands. With the concern that would it result in a geothermal plant there? All of which we consider to be in Mauna Kea. And if not there, maybe at Kua'iha'i or maybe even Kau. I've testified numerous times throughout the years on my concerns regarding Mauna Kea. But today, my concerns are a result of the recent letters from the governor, the support of the Hawaii Island mayor on these three controversial issues impacting Mauna Kea, the way all three issues are being rushed through for approval, and the manner in which Hawaiian values, stories, culture, and traditions are inserted into the write-ups of these projects, even while each of them result in varying degrees of adverse, irreversible harm, damage, desecration, and destruction to the environment and consequently to our people. The Mauna is an extension of ourselves. It's a cultural, genealogical, environmental, and spiritual obligation and responsibility for us. We don't take the word kuliana lightly. When it comes to the TMT, they can't apologize to us and hope for us to change our minds because they hold meetings and present and provide scholarships in our schools and make promises to the business communities. They should be doing all of that irregardless of the TMT for the years they have had the mountain. And they can't wait us out, pay us off, make us promises, change our minds, hope we divide or give up, or that our numbers will dwindle. There have been thousands upon thousands, not just here in Hawaii, but around the world, who have expressed their commitment and solidarity to protect Mauna Kea. And they are watching and ready to support. And every reason that we ever stood for Mauna Kea remains the same. Our minds have not changed. Money is not more important than permanent destruction and desecration that will result in repercussions and consequences we leave for Okeke. When it comes to geothermal, no matter what your position is, and not to divide, but to do our due diligence, there should be full and complete transparency of proposed geothermal development. Any geothermal exploration or expansion attempt should undergo rigorous environmental, cultural, and legal review in compliance with applicable laws. And no further geothermal exploration or expansion on Hawaii Island should occur without meaningful engagement and free prior and informed consent. And may I add that we are not, that we not be expected to automatically buy in because it's renewable energy or because there's a model that works somewhere else or the money that it will bring in, but that we listen to the people of Puna who have been impacted directly for decades. And for Pohakuloa, remember when it came to Red Hill, there was a press conference and a spokesperson said, "When it comes to the military, we're not making suggestions, we're making demands." A recent post to protect Pohakuloa called on Oha to stand with the Lahui as we demand no condemnation, an end to live-fire training. The governor followed the law, no fast-tracking, clean up and return all these lands, and that there be accountability, oversight, and restitution. And there be a commitment to that free prior and informed consent and engagement. And what I'm asking of you is to assert your demand based on your legal standing and your obligation and step forward and not wait for an invitation to engage. And that you listen to the voices of the people, especially those who are impacted directly on this island, and that we all speak as Native Hawaiians for all of Hawaii. And I see that my thirty seconds, I'm pau, but I want to end with a celebration. A potential celebration is that if you give them five million for geothermal, you give the people five million through organization and individuals who will study, research, provide educational materials, ceremonies, presentations to represent the concerns that we have, and we not be one-sided about it. You give them, you give us. We are doing great work. We have made great strides. A'ole TMT is still no TMT on the mountain. Pohakuloa and Humu'ula are Mauna Kea. The land, water, and people must be treated with respect and dignity. I'm just going to end by saying, next week, we'll be on our Ahapule aina hole of four days of a Makahiki relay run around this island. And you can be sure that everything that is being discussed here will be put down in every footstep and in every prayer that we lift forward. Because lono i kamakahiki, and we are still here. Mahalo.
Leilani Ka'apuni. And next following Leilani will be Skye. No last name, but Skye is who signed up.
Aloha Eina Kahu, vai vai o Oha. Ova'au Leilani Lindsay Ka'apuni, no pi'ihonua hilo ni. I work here at Kahaka'ula, as you can tell by my shirt, but I am standing to, and I mahalo the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for your vote to support the ola of our olelo, which you have done for many years. But I stand here today as an individual also to testify and to echo the testimony of Davis Price and Puakase, asking the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to stand with our Lahui in protection of our lands against the destruction and devastation by military bombing and live-fire training. I have walked Pohakuloa. I have seen that destruction with my own eyes. I have seen Ivi kupuna exposed, harmed. I have seen upright stones of religious sites at Pohakuloa that have been used as targets filled with bullet holes and toppled. We know that the waters directly under Pohakuloa Training Area is the highest, is the high elevation, largest contained freshwater aquifer in all of Hawaii, perhaps in all of the Pacific. The waters of that aquifer are identified by their isotopes as sourced from Wa'oe, from the summit of Mauna Kea. The ancient guardian of those waters, the sacred waters of Kane, was named Pohakuloa. And he followed those waters down to the plain and continues to stand as a guardian of those waters and watches as a witness to what happens there. We stood, we were among the organizations that wrote a letter to Governor Josh Green. We stood for a press conference on September second of this year, calling upon the governor not to be pressured, to resist pressure from the US military to rush a process to hold on to those lands. No answer from him other than, "Leave your comments on my website." And then a week ago, he sends a letter to the Secretary of the Army saying, "We want, I want ten billion dollars." And then you can have all of this and continue to destroy and bomb and do whatever you want. Ten billion dollars is a lot of money. Some people may think that's a great deal, let's do it. What are billions of dollars when your water is contaminated, when your aquifers are cracked, as they have done on Koholave? The military has shown us their track record. They cracked the cap rock of Koholave after decades of bombing practice, rendering that island uninhabitable forever. We've seen what has happened in Red Hill, the contamination of a major aquifer of the main island of Oahu. What is a billion dollars when your water is gone, when your aquifers are gone, when your air is polluted, when you are exposed to radiation, when you are breathing pollution? What have we learned about the military's track record in Hawaii? I mean no disrespect to those who have served honorably in the military. My father was a lieutenant colonel in the Air Force stationed at Hickam Field on December seventh, nineteen forty-one. He was recognized and acknowledged as a Pearl Harbor survivor every year until he passed away in nineteen eighty. During World War II, he invented the submarine sonar, sonar submarine detector from air and the delta-wing aircraft. And I don't say any of this to boast because my father never did. But I want to emphasize that he was loyal. He served honorably, as many of our Hawaiian men, fathers, grandfathers, Hawaiian men and women, continue to serve. But after World War II, my father left the military. And for the rest of his days, till the last day of his life, he opposed the militarism of Hawaii because he knew it would not be a good future for our people, for our children. I stand with him on his words. And the warning voices of those who have gone before us, Yosepa Navajee, George Helm, Henry Lindsay, Uncle Ku Ching. And I ask the trustees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs to stand in protection of our land, our waters, our oceans, our people. Mahalo.
Right, Skai, followed by Wahine Ko'a.
Aloha mai kakao. O Skai ko'oinoa. I'm here as a beneficiary to ask you, Oha, as a major stakeholder who has a responsibility to stand firmly against any renewal, extension, or trade of military leases on our lands, to do exactly that. I want to preface my testimony by first apologizing on behalf of her and the students here who get reprimanded for speaking English here in this room. So forgive me because English is my first language, and I am not a native speaker yet. But since we're here and completely ignoring this fact, I will definitely take this opportunity to speak my truth in English. And two, I want to preface my testimony by saying, everything I'm about to say is nothing new, but unfortunately, it needs to be said again and again and again. This morning, a friend sent me a video of Dr. John Osorio, and he said, "Maybe it's time we stop being so careful, stop being so nice, because anger suits us better now." And I agree, because I'm pissed. And I'm even more pissed now after that geothermal presentation and those ridiculous asks. Let me be clear, no geothermal, ever. No TMT, ever, too. But back to why I'm really here today. I'm here because our governor is sitting in private meetings with Driscoll, cutting backdoor deals that shut out the public. Deals that could bring in billions for his quote, "Advancing defense and community goals." But at what cost? He's trading away our right to hold the federal government accountable. And they don't even follow their own laws. Not activists, not the public, but the state's own BLNR rejected the army's final EIS for the PTA lease renewal because it didn't meet legal requirements and failed to address cultural and environmental impacts. That means the lease cannot legally move forward. But this backdoor deal between Josh Green and Driscoll shows they're still willing and intentionally trying to move forward despite not being in legal compliance with their own laws. Red Hill poisoned our water. Pohakula has been bombed for over a century. Kaho'olave is still unsafe and unlivable till this day. And yet the state continues to side with the same people causing the harm. Oha receives 20% of all revenue from the Public Land Trust. Your constitutional purpose is to protect native Hawaiians and formulate policy on our behalf. You have the power to oppose these leases, adopt resolutions, and intervene. And that's what we're asking you to do. We need you to hear us and take this seriously. Our ancestors already proved that our people are our best leaders. We take care of we. We take care of us. When everyone wanted a piece of the pie, it was our own government, our own leaders, who held it together because they prioritize their own people. They prioritize us, your beneficiaries. Like Dr. Osorio said, it's time we stop being nice because what's happening here is heva. We want the military to leave and clean up on their way out. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay, I have Wahine Ko'a signed up, followed by Bronson Azama. Aloha.
Aloha mai kakao.
Ko'a.
Okame amua, ekala mai au, e ke'ali'io, ke'ali'ko'olani, amenakupuna, iho'ama'i ki'ahi loko, ke'i'a hale olalo, noka namuhaule. Nolaila. There are so many beautiful perspectives that are represented here in this room today, and I come to share a different but same perspective with you folks. So mahalo for your time to listen, as is your kuleana. It must be hard for you folks as a person sometimes that sits in a suit behind a desk to imagine your people actually being sovereign. It must be hard for you as people not competent in olalo Hawaii to imagine your people being sovereign. It might be hard for you as somebody working in an American system to imagine yourself being sovereign sometimes. So I start off with this to say, eh, I understand 100% why you might have a hard time thinking about sovereignty and ku'oko'a, iloko'oko Hawaii pai aina. However, there are many Hawaiians that do know that the path forward is through sovereignty. And we don't talk about it in all of the rooms that we walk into because we know that that word triggers some people and it scares some people away. Instead, we live sovereignty every day through the choices that we make, the food that we grow, the Lahui that we connect, the things that we do in our time off the clock, without being paid, right? Without getting all kind of federal money to do the Lahui work that we're doing. It's a choice that we make every single day. And again, like I said last night, I encourage everybody in here. If you guys like know what I'm talking about, well, check them out at ho'omakauka.com, yeah? Because there are people mobilizing right now. And if you tired of sitting in the room and talking, 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 and nobody really hearing us, ho'omakauka.com, yeah? So the snap and the grants not going to solve the problem. Throwing money at geothermal not going to solve the problem. Moving where the military bombs is not a permanent solution. All of these things hinge on one thing, which is our ea, our ku'oko'a, that rightfully belongs to us. We talk a lot about kuleana in this room. A reminder that kuleana is a right, a privilege, a responsibility. So if you have the privilege of sitting in a position of power, you have the responsibility of sitting in that position of power for everybody in this room. I ask you to make the choice to understand, recognize, and acknowledge that sovereignty is an option and not one that is going to be won in comfortable cushy ways of aloha shirts and lay and inter-island travel or world tours all around. I ask for you folks to take accountability and the initiative, not just wait till we come up to the mic for complain, 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 and then just go about your day. I ask you to take the initiative to mahalama Kau Hawaii pai aina, her people and her places. I urge you quickly and intentionally to have whatever meetings you must have to realign yourselves with the people that you're charged to kakao. Red Hill was impossible at one point, yeah? Everybody said, "There's no way they're ever going to leave Red Hill." And look what happened. At last night's meeting, we spoke about all of this stuff, and you were the one, Kai, that brought up about how Red Hill was impossible at one time and look what happened. And in that same breath, you said, "They're never going to give us land back." And we were speaking for sovereignty in that room, and you constantly tone policed, gaslit, deflected every single point. And as a Kanaka that knows my voice and stands as for and with my kupuna, that is heva. And I'm absolutely tired of walking into Lahui spaces and being told by Kane, all the time, most of the time, that we know more voice and, oh, you know, get to your question, cutting us off in the room. So I urge all of you, even you, when you're looking at me like that, I urge all of you to intentionally decolonize the ways that you interact with your own people. Intentionally think about the way that you're coming at us and speaking to us, not just the people that get your money, not just the people in your guys' pockets. Examine the way you're talking to all of us. I understand you folks have kuleana to all people of Hawaii and that there are many perspectives. I also believe 100% that when Hawaiians are allowed space to awamo kuleana that is rightfully ours, that is when all of Hawaii thrives and benefits. And a reminder to each and every single one of you again that kuleana doesn't just mean your responsibility as like a Hawaiian value you throw up on the wall and then forget about. And even when they was talking about the geothermal, the kulana, remember that too. Go look that up if you don't know what that is. And remember, kulana is this way, not this way. Who stay on top of who, who stay underneath who. Kau Hawaii pai aina, our kulana runs this way. So mahalama that kuleana, that privilege and respect the people that you are charged to mahalama.
Bronson Azama, followed by Makoa. Bronson Azama.
Aloha Bronson. Aloha mai. It's always timely when we get to speak, so I always trust the divine secretary or akua to guide us in our words. Ano'aikia aloha kakao, trustees. My concern lies with our seriousness to address an illegal wrong with the legal remedy echoed by many of the previous speakers. And with the last speaker, my comments reflect the impacts of the loss of national consciousness and what it means to be a citizen that operates in a nation separate from the United States. Our nation is in dire political, is in dire political conditions. How much must we, how much must we lose before we utilize the legal mechanism? The surmounting injustices we face are built upon and tied to an illegal overthrow and an 132-year-long illegal occupation, an illegality that has been acknowledged by the apology resolution, reinforced by the United Nations Human Rights Commission. And yet this important topic that resonates with many of our youth and community is not reflected in the deliberations and programs to unify our people. We must break the illusion of choice. The truth is, there is a legal entity, and every choice where we stray from it puts the inherent sovereignty that we claim in peril under international law. The time has passed. We can no longer piecemeal which aspects of injustice applies. Our kupuna mobilized to become the first internationally-recognized non-European nation-state. Not a racial group, not a tribe, not a beneficiary, not an American, but rather an independent nation-state whose mo'i promulgated a constitution that informs the criteria of the government we must work to re-establish today, the lawful and legal vehicle. I would like to challenge a few notions as related to the apology bill. The United States does not get to dictate to us which paths we may choose from. Just because the apology bill recognizes our indigenous rights does not extinguish or limit our path to leverage and explore the mechanisms to lawfully restore our government. The United States is not judge and jury. The notion that the apology resolution has no teeth and limits us to reconciliation, I would challenge otherwise with a saying that we all may be familiar with. Anything you say, anything you say can and will be used against you in the court of law, and it is not an American court that gets to decide. The pursuit of an alternative path that circumvents the kingdom is no different than what the Republic of Hawaii attempted. We can no longer Band-Aid fix what requires surgery as American exceptionalism reveals its ugly hand, unraveling global alliances, unraveling global alliances, and circumventing their own constitution with a government shutdown, now they know how it feels, and the world's destiny impacted by the nation which occupies us. We must see that we play an integral role with the solution that restores the rule of law, beginning with writing and 132-year-old wrong. They purport fear with the threat of stealing what was already stolen. And now with the governor's efforts reveal work towards a better deal, I am personally not interested in making bad better or a better bad. And might I remind everyone, we cannot account for the dollar they were supposed to pay in the last deal, nor can we find a treaty which all of this is predicated on. I rebuke that any amount of money justifies bondage. Was that not true for slavery? So now is not the time to add layers upon the harm, but to rather dig deep and uphold law. Ignorance is one thing, and we should be open to forgiveness. But choosing to ignore there is a legal remedy is treason against the kingdom under its own constitution. Cherkahelle shared at the last Hawaiian Civic Club convention that we must not operate on fear. That applies in our ability to navigate this new geopolitical reality, not as a people, not as a tribe, a beneficiary, but as a nation. Thank you so much. I reinforce, no lawful authority has agreed to the shotgun wedding. So let's not pretend that we can't say there is no need for a divorce in the first place. According to the UN, our nation's sovereignty was never extinguished. And now more than ever, we, all, and Oha is welcome to help in this, the restoration of our lawful government and move forward to create new conditions where the symptoms we respond in today will no longer exist. Mahalo.
Aloha Bronson. Okay, next up is Makoa, followed by Kalei Kiliqini. Aloha.
Aloha mai kakao. And aloha to the board. All of our making it out here today to listen to our concerns. I think to hear it here is the most important part. Come before you today regarding some concerns and in effort to bring to your attention grave harm and crimes that have been perpetuated against the Hawaiian people, the land, and all of our collective health. With the recent attempts by Josh Green in the last week trying to skirt Hawaii's law, facilitate backroom deals for the retention of US military lands on Pohakula, what is Oha going to do? Green has shown nothing but willingness to breach the law, breach public trust, state of Hawaii law, to further his own political aspirations as well as the agendas of those who arguably present the greatest harm to Kanaka. What is the ask? The ask is to advocate for Hawaiians and Crown lands, hold Josh Green accountable to the law, staunchly oppose all military leases, support the return, decontamination of all lands the US military holds, end live fire. But I think, most importantly, continue to fight for the liberation of our people from this illegal occupation. How long is Oha willing to watch from the sidelines as the rug is pulled from under our feet? All they have offered in the last decades has been $1 and the threat of condemnation. Whether it's $1, $10 billion, or even $10 trillion, no amount of blood money can justify what has happened there and what will continue to do there, shall we do nothing? We ask that Oha join the fight. Join them. E ho'omau'i ke'upaa, kaloha aina. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, we have Kalei Kiliqini, followed by Chloe Waters.
No, you're good.
No, you're good. Let me know if you can hear me. Aloha. Can you hear me all? Can y'all hear me? Okay. Am I okay? Okay. Thank you so much. Aloha, my name is Kalei Kailikini. I was born and bred at Ho'olihua Molokai. And Ho'olihua because that was the first hospital. I'm that O. So I live in Waikia'uka, Hilo, and I really appreciate the opportunity to address the OHA board. And I did attend, and this is where I'm coming from. This is my mana'o, my passion, and that is ho'oulu la hui aloha. I just love that term. Ho'oulu la hui aloha. To raise a beloved nation, people. How do we do that? How do we do that? We have to have healthy Kanaka Ma'uli. Healthy, alive, well. Okay? So that's where I come in. I studied naturopathic healing 25 years. One of the things, there's three rules in natural healing or health, three rules. Number one, nutrition. That is, the foods that we eat, are we eating the right foods, our diet? Fresh raw vegetables, fresh raw fruits, poi, limu, saturated fats is very good for you. Coconut oil, it's saturated fat, but it's a plant. Not preservatives laden foods like McDonald's. Sorry to disappoint you, but McDonald's is a really bad place to eat. Okay? Number two, cleanse. We need to be cleaned. We take a bath every night. Do we clean our insides? Do we clean our liver, pancreas, colon, blood? Do we do that? No, most of us don't. We take a bath every night. So cleaning is because we consume toxins, poisons. How do we do that? We get it from tooth fillings amalgam. It's mercury. We get it from pesticides. We get it from cleaning detergents. You wash your clothes. You wash your dishes. Fluoride. Okay, now fluoride, you only can use it, only the dentist can apply it supposedly. But now it's in toothpaste, and it's a poison. It actually is a poison. Okay? Another, vaccinations. Vaccinations have tymerosal, that's mercury, and other ingredients. And so we have to, again, many speakers have said, research, extensive researching. I can tell you all of this information. You may not want to believe me, and I don't want you to believe me. I do want you to research through your homework and research it on your own because you are responsible kuleana for your health. I'm not. Balance. The third part is balance. What is that? Well, you cannot overeat. You cannot overconsume. So that's balance. Also, I am very happy to know that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, they allocated $11.8 million for health. And so I saw 48 programs that you did for chronic disease prevention. So that was really good. I was happy. But I see 10,600 native Hawaiians enrolled. Now, let's do the math. What percentage is that? And how long of a period was the 48 programs? We need to bring the numbers up. How do we do that? We have to figure out ways to bring, and make a concentration effort, a concentrated effort about health and wellness and how important it is. So the next is land and water, and here is Pohakuloa. They are poisoning our land. That's heva. We can't allow that. It has to stop. And then the military, they don't need it for testing weapons or training. They don't have to do it anymore. We live in a technology world. The US military, do you know their budget? What their budget is? Trillions? Come on, let's be real. They've got the most advanced, high-technology weapons. One is geoengineering. What is that? Weather modification. Okay? And other countries have it, so they don't need to fight with weapons. Why do they fight with weapons? Because it makes money. Next, Mauna Kea, sacred, the largest aquifer. We have on this island five aquifers. We have abundant water. And the largest is Mauna Kea, pristine. And you know the very rich billionaires, you know what their mantra is now? Our next petroleum is water. That's why they want Mauna Kea. Thank you very much. I do not want to go over my time. I really appreciate your attention. Mahalo.
Aloha. Thank you.
Thank you, OHA.
All right. Okay, next is Chloe, Chloe Waters, followed by Terry Napiahi. Aloha Chloe. We have approximately 10, 10 more testifiers.
Aloha mai kakao.
Aloha.
Oh, Chloe Waters, ko'ouinoa, noho'a'au ma Hilo, no ka'ahu pua au o Waikia'u. Mahalo nuu for allowing me to speak before you guys today. I would like to speak against the overall desecration that is happening in these times. Many solutions that have been discussed thus far merely seem like a Band-Aid at most to what our problems are. What we have seen, as a metaphor, as what we have seen in nature, where people try to artificially control what happens on our aina, such as the introduction of mongooses and gorse, what we are left with is more invasive species, more seemingly irreversible problems, and more harm than good than we started off with. It feels like generationally, the lack of reparations is piling up and continues to pile up. In real time, we are being fed information that would lead us to believe that we will surely benefit as Kanaka Ma'uli, native people of this aina with geothermal, as well as the deals that the governor is making behind our backs in regards to the military leases. With what we have left, how are we supposed to justify tapping into more land and more resources with the guise of it being to our own benefit? Preaching these things only benefits those willing to align their views for a check, but not about Kanaka as a whole. All I have to say to that is get involved now at ho'oumakauka.com. Ualava makou ikapohaku. Mahalo nuu loa.
Mahalo. Okay, next is Terry Napiahi followed by Halei Aloha Ayau. And that will be followed by Uncle Pat.
Aloha mai.
Aloha.
Terry Napiahi representing Pele Defense Fund and also Truth for the People. I'm going to just explain a little bit about my question earlier, and I'm taking off, you know, from there. So I wanted to go over, just kind of introduce what we're doing as an organization called Truth for the People. We have begun our presentations with panelists of people that live here on this moku that have had many experiences with geothermal development for over 50 years. So we have had different places. We've traveled. We've gone to, we're on our fourth presentation, and it's going to be in Ka'oo next. We're going to go to Kohala, and then we're going to go to Waimea after that. But what I wanted to present to you was the fact that these are the voices of the people that have lived opposing geothermal because they either live next to it. It is a desecration of their religious practices. And so I kind of wanted to bring up something that happened in 2014 that I think is significant. In 2014, at the same time that at Board of Land and Natural Resources, that TMT was being heard, there was also another hearing that was being heard at BLNR, and that was the proposal to do 22 drilling holes on Hualali. At that time, the University of Hawaii participated with scientist Don Thomas and Laura Louts, who were proposing to do drilling for water, so they said, on Hualali. We filed a lawsuit in 2014. We were the first case in the newly formed court, environmental court, being heard by Judge Ibarra. At that time, we were able to present our concerns about the fact that exploratory drilling was being done without an environmental review. At that time, the University of Hawaii pulled out, but they were able to get findings of no significant impact that was going to be drilling four wells at Pohakuloa, the state parks, Waiki'i, looking for water. At the same time, I'm going to pass this out, if you don't mind. I didn't have time. Can I do that? Pass this out? It's a picture of the water that Leilani was talking about, the aquifer that they're going to be tapping into. They were able to do some drilling. They got findings of no significant impact to drill for the water on Mauna Kea that Leilani is referring to as Kani. In their reports, they were talking about the fact that they were able to find a high pure water source that they were able to drill to. I have a picture there that you can see what they're willing to tap into. When I was asked, when I asked Department of Hawaiian Homeland to see why they wanted to do this, because DHHL is proposing to drill right in the front of Huma'ula, the entry to Mauna Loa, I mean Mauna Kea, and on two other sides of their property in DHHL, closest that they can to the water well that they want to drill, so that they could use that for military geothermal needs. So I wanted to bring to your attention that that water that they're trying to tap into, they already did. Drilling requires chemicals to go into the ground. They just cannot go with a drill without chemicals to frack and to get through hard pohaku. So they already drilled into that water source. So now what they're going to do is they need that gallons of water to run geothermal at the very highest peak of this aina. Currently, the only geothermal plant in the state of Hawaii is on the Rift of Puna, PGV. They have had so many problems. I'm not going to go over it because you have that evidence in the state of what happened to other geothermal plants that drilled very close to Tutupeli. Some of them did not have the opportunity to drill and to have their company being proposed. I want an opportunity for a Truth of the People to give a presentation in front of OHA so that we can have, within the 30 days that you said you were going to give me, whether you do support geo presentations, geo proposals, give us the opportunity to share with you the evidence we have of the impacts that have happened on this moku for 50 years. Can I get a yes or no?
Thank you, Auntie Terry. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Halei aloha. It was followed by Uncle Pat and then Konoi Case. Welcome.
Aloha no'kako.
Aloha.
Oau edward Halei aloha ayau. Hekeke'a Reynos le aloha ayau. Ku'umaku akane mai kanoe hine amuro. Moanike alaka'ao ku'umakuahine. Mai Ho'olihua Molokai mai au. Akanaho Hawaii, pa'ka'hi lo Hawaii. I wanted to preface my comments by saying this is not in any way to disparage military service. My family comes from a long line of military service, including such great military leaders as Ke'kuha Pio and Kamehameha. I did run a search in ChatGPT, and I asked it to list all sites contaminated by US military training that was not cleaned up. The response, quote, "Short answer upfront, I can't produce a true exhaustive list in one reply. There were hundreds, thousands of DOD, Department of Navy, US Air Force, US Marine Corps locations with contamination or unexploded ordinance issues. However, below are well-documented, high-profile examples where US military training or testing polluted land and critically, where cleanup or full remediation remains incomplete or contested." Puerto Rico Atlantic Fleet Weapons Training Area, Kaholave, as we all know, the Marshall Islands where nuclear testing was done at Bikini and Neowitak Atolls, Camp Lejeune in North Carolina, numerous bombing range complexes and training ranges in the continental United States, including Utah Test and Training Range, former ranges in the Southwest, as well as coastal training areas. It then says, "Why I can't list every site in one reply is because DOD and partner agencies track contamination under multiple programs. And depending on pollutant type, a site may appear on different inventories. DOD inventories lists hundreds of installations." I then asked ChatGPT to then list all sites contaminated by military use in the state of Hawaii. And it says, "Here's a consolidated source-based list of Hawaii sites with documented contamination or munitions UXO from US military use." I've grouped them by program and island, so you can see both the active federal facilities under EPA DOD cleanup and formerly used defense sites. The acronym is FUDs. So if you grew up in Molokai, especially if you grew up in Ho'olihua, the beach that we all grew up in and where we learned to fish, and our icebox is Mo'omomi. Mo'omomi was a target site. Ili'o Point closed off now from use because of the discovery of UXOs. On Molokai, when they find UXOs, you know what they do? Keep it to themselves. You know why? Because they don't want the lands shut off from access. And which is to say, you went to visit Pohakuloa, you got to experience aina that is currently under contamination. And the US military is asking you to trust, asking us, the community, to trust it that it's going to proceed as responsible steward. On this island, Waikoloa maneuver area, Wa'ima'la training area on Oahu, Kaholave, these are all FUDs. These are all former military use lands that have been contaminated or subject to cleanup. We must protect the land. I mean, we're telling you something you already know. To extend the military leases is to extend the contamination and guarantee its death because the US military will not clean it up. I know this because the best indicator of future behavior is past behavior. Our queen, Lily Okulani urged her people not to fail to act because you fear you may fail. In conclusion, I say this, we must oppose military lease extension because the death of the land represents the death of our Hawaiian soul. A great Hawaiian from Kalamu'ula Homestead once wrote, quote, "Truth is, there is man and there is environment. One does not supersede the other. The breath in man is the breath of Papa, Mother Earth. Man is merely the caretaker of the land that maintains his life and nourishes his soul. Therefore, the aina is sacred. The church of life is not in a building. It is the open sky, the surrounding ocean, the beautiful soil. My duty is to protect Mother Earth. Duty is to protect Mother Earth, who gives me life, and to give thanks with humility as well as ask forgiveness for the arrogance and insensitivity of man." That was George Jared Helm. While we do not have decision autonomy to maintain our kuleana to protect the land, we must stand up to and protect her from abuse. Hold the US military to the standard of care that we hold. Hold the US military to the standard of care that we hold our own selves to, be responsible stewards of the land or lose the ability to do so. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Thank you for the extra thirty seconds.
Kalé. We have Uncle Pat, Keokaha, and followed by Uncle Pa'vi Kanoi Case, and then Ricky Pestana.
Aloha mai kako. My name is Pat Kahavai Ola'a. I'm a resident of, oh, I'm not a resident there. I'm a native Hawaiian as defined under the Hawaiians Home Commission Act, and I am a product of Keokaha. I've lived there, my eighty-one years of my life has been there. And but I do need to ask the chair if you would beg the indifference on point of personal privilege. I see in your agenda that you got those marks next to executive session, those double pluses. Does that mean, and I had to go back to the addendum to look, is that that mean that it's under chapter ninety-two? Is that why it's there?
Hold on, Uncle Pat. Let me, let me get exactly what you're looking at.
On the back, there's this couple, oh. Under executive session, it has this little marks. And I'm gonna just assume, and you know, when you assume, you make a-
Yes, yes, that means that-
Okay, that is under chapter ninety-two?
Chapter ninety-two, yes.
Okay. Then can I assume then that this hearing is under chapter ninety-one?
I know it's not under chapter ninety-two.
So then I can assume it's under chapter ninety-one? That's my question. My question and the reason I say that, because under chapter ninety-two, I don't can do nothing. But under chapter ninety-one, I can, as a beneficiary, as a person, somebody from the public, I have right and recourse. If I don't like the decision that any of you make or this body makes, I can then now move to the circuit court to have this resolved. That's all I'm asking.
We have our board, we have a board council here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that, I just don't like assume.
We are operating under chapter ninety-two.
Under chapter ninety-one, thank you.
Ninety-two. No, we operate under chapter ninety-two. That's all open meetings.
Okay, all the board meetings, this board meeting is under chapter ninety-two. It's not under chapter ninety-one.
It is not under chapter ninety-one. Executive sessions are under chapter ninety-two dash four and dash five.
This board meeting is under chapter ninety-two. That gives me an opportunity to see. Now it tells me I don't need to go scream and holler to you because if you do something that I don't like, I don't can do nothing. Because chapter ninety-two only says you're here for information purposes only. So I just needed to clear that. So that being said, it hurt me this way only because this is an entity. OHA is an entity, a Hawaiian entity. And whenever open, the format of your, of your program has nothing here that says puli, to open with a puli. Protocol dictates, Hawaiian dictates a puli. So I would just want to, if you're gonna do this under chapter ninety-two, that the first under agenda recall to order should be a puli. That's for me. And then I'll go into why I believe it should be there. Because as Hawaiians, with due respect to our young, that's anger. I heard anger, I heard frustration all day. I heard that. And sixty years ago, that's me. You know? But it is something that we gotta do. And I think the last speaker spoke to, many did, but the last speaker spoke to why Lily Okalani's words were just that. Lily Okalani was our last reigning monarch that was supposedly overthrown in eighteen ninety-three. And she also said this, and that's why I think puli is important. She also said, "He will keep his promise, and he will listen to the voices of his Hawaiian children, lamenting for their homes. It is for them that I would give the last drop of my blood. It is for them that I would spend, no, am spending everything belonging to me." So therefore, I just want to leave all of you with that. Make sure when we get together, the next time, we're gonna puli, and thank you very much. And please hold up one sign that says shut up.
Thanks, Uncle Pat. Okay, next up is Kanoi Case, followed by Ricky Pestana, and then Terry Lee Shibuya. Kanoi Case. More? More. One once. Okay. Ricky Pestana.
Aloha, kako. Unlike, Bijinini is my first language. Unlike my brother, who's older than me, a combat veteran of Vietnam. I was there in sixty-six and sixty-seven. And Mr. Kaika Haley, you always come across as a military man. But I look at all you followers right here. You followers, all traitors, treasonous, fraudulent. I don't scare to tell you guys that. I saw good men die. The government still lie. You guys all selling out to government, just messing up your own people. The word Board of Trustees, how long you guys been in existence? I don't can trust you guys. I come from the generation of Colette Machado and Adet Sisar and Malama Her. All you followers get the kind five hundred thousand dollar shoes. She still would wear her tennis shoes going into the OHA meetings. That's how down to earth she was. She still is. Again, I'll repeat, you guys are all traitors. That's all treasonous people. How long, how much you make an hour? How much you make a month? Honestly, tell me how much you make? You tell, Mr. Kaika Haley, how much you make an hour? You wanna give Kanaka how much a day? Six hundred dollars a day? How much you make a day? How much you made for come over here? How much you make a month? Each one of you, how much you make a month? No answer? Can you tell me how much you make a month? Is it open to the public? How much you follow make? As a combat veteran, I make less than four thousand dollar. But people like us, when fight for you followers' freedom and your jobs, when OHA was created, we knew already you guys was the place the people divide and conquer. What Lily Okalani saying. And Kawe Keoli, Kamehameha the third. Read more about him. Read much more about him. He wrote the first peace treaty on this planet. Why all the flags in America, the courthouses, no one know here today, but get one gold yellow trimmer on the flag. You know, Kawe Keoli, in eighteen seventy-one, over two hundred countries went sign up onto that treaty for peace. Peace, Maluhia, peace. I don't see you followers bringing peace to the people. Make all that money, and you giving us, you giving the people, how much? We gotta fight over food stamps? I moved back from Maui about four years ago. And I live on on this old, beautiful old sailboat. And I ride my bike all over Hilo. Wow, the Kanaka people on the streets, drugs, they gotta stand in line for SNAP. Food stamps back in my day was. But now they trying to snap out of the poverty, poverty. You guys made them poor. Now you guys call them, oh, they gonna give you some SNAP. They gonna snap you guys out of. You saw the line in front, Civic Auditorium yesterday. You see me how many people was in their cars? The parking lot was full. And more people there than on football game or Marimana. The whole parking lot was full, standing in line for SNAP. You guys went SNAP them. I knew a lot more food, more money for the people. And the word native, oh, wait, you guys went school. You guys call you guys self-native. You know what? Native is just another word for slave. That's the kind colonial missionary school, Negro school, they teach you how to be a slave. You guys pushing that artif, you guys use that word native. Haole natives, we Akanaka. I am angry, I'm not mad. I was mad when I was in Vietnam. I came back, it took me many years to heal. But I'm not mad at you guys. I'm angry, I'm disappointed. And I don't shame call you guys traitors. Because I know Planyke is on the street of Hilo. They know, they're wide awake. You know what they call Mayor Alameda? Broke Mira Alameda. One seventeen-year-old boy told me that. Uncle, he broke Mira. He lied to the people, some kind of thing he wants to help Mauna Kea. Mauna Kea, the way my whole sailboat is, is called Waia Kea. They call it Waialoa Harbor. It's not a harbor, it's Waia Kea Kai. The whiff from Mauna Kea in Mauna Loa comes down to this austrary, the word austrary. At one time had five fingers of beautiful water going into Hilo Bay, which is now highly toxic. I gon' pow, I gon' pow, but I gon' come back and get plenty more. Young, you'd be surprised, the young people I see in Hilo that see you followers as what you followers are. You guys got the money, their parents standing in SNAP lines.
Thank you. Mahalo, aku'a. Next up is Terry Shibuya. Terry Shibuya, followed by Kawe Lopes.
Aloha, honorable trustees. We wanted to also extend a big mahalo for holding this meeting here, being that we're from Kau, you know, and it's a halfway point. So here we go again, it's, I hate to say it's a hanaho. So we're from Kau, and we're trying to promote a Kau Hawaiian Cultural Center. We take this back from nineteen ninety-four. And all the time, OHA had their meetings, we've been presenting. They've been very supportive, don't get me wrong. But we're here today to ask in partnership, to have partnership with OHA as well. And we are doing our best. We are working with Department of Hawaiian Homes Land, which we are so close to getting our land locked in, correct? We're so close, we had the environmental assessment done. We had the blueprints redone, stamped, ready to be built. Just, and then we just inherited another foundation behind Punalu Bakery. So as of January, we'll have a four-acre partial as well to preserve the Hawaiian culture. And the bigger picture, the bigger model though, is up at Waiohino. That's with Department of Hawaiian Homes Land. And that would be one bigger model where it'll be a hub in Kau where people can come to do the hula, the language, the poi pounding. We put on an ongoing ho'ulaula every March in celebration of Prince Kohio. So March twenty-eighth, I invite all of you to come on down, see what we're trying to do. It's a mini model of the Kau Hawaiian Cultural Center that will help our community culturally, sustainability, economically, you know. And Kau so needs this. Back in the past, we had, oh, we're gonna give you guys the spaceport. No, we don't like spaceport. Haole, kapu. We're gonna give you guys the prison. No, haole, we don't like prison too. This is always something Kau wanted, a Kau Hawaiian Cultural Center. We have pages and pages and pages of letters of support. We have years and years and years of letters of support from mayors. I think we went through five, Kimo Alameda gonna be six, and he's in support, by the way. And Governor Josh Green, they're all in support. Jukenua strongly supports Janey Capella strongly. So we're doing what we need to do. So we're just asking, coming forward, and we're humbly asking your partnership in helping us make this Kau Hawaiian Cultural Center work for our people. And it'll help, it'll be such a helpful thing because the people are already doing it. We already have the talented people, we have, we have the players all in place. And we wanna, we also wanna keep the business in Kau. I like his thought. I'll let him explain that thought.
I'm not the talker, if you notice. Man know few words. But then the whole idea of this project started way back in ninety-four. OHA joined funding with Bob Herkies. We got the monies, but somehow, we're young out of the bunch. So we never know what the word politics. OHA gave ninety-five thousand, the state legislature gave two fifty in the annual. Nobody really left all the money either way, so it lapses. Now we're back here, round two, again, to build a cultural center, which consists of a lot of activity for the youth, kupunas, the whole nine yards, all in one package, and be a hub. We did all the feasibility, all the business plan, all done. Yesterday, we had to redo the building permit for different site. We decided to go with Hawaiian homeland because Hawaiian land, in case we're not there to continue on, still gonna be in Hawaiian hand. That's the whole idea with the DHHL land that we're going for. And almost there.
I'm not sure if you know Punaluu, Punaluu Black Sand Beach. There was a pavilion there in the past. I'm not sure if, I was a little girl dancing hula for the tourists. But that's kind of the model what we're doing. We're just moving that model because now it's all gone with the tidal wave back in, I think nineteen seventy. It took it away. So we're trying to move that model up to Waiohino. And Waiohino has so much significance, so much history up there as well. So we would be honored if you would be wanting to partnership with, you know, Hanalaulima. Not only Hanalaulima, we also branch with other organizations as well. Hawaiian Civic Club, we always partner up and do the Prince Kohio Day. And a lot of the organizations are in support too. We have support letters. So again, I want mahalo all of you. Nice meeting all of you, and thank you for what you're doing.
Mahalo, thank you. Okay, next is-
You just got a hard job, just got a hard job.
Yeah, yeah, mahalo.
Mahalo. We have four more testifiers. Next up is Kawe Lopes, followed by Kamalani Capelliela. Kawe Lopes.
Aloha mai kako. Ikike ho'olohe mai au. I wanna start by saying that I too can trace my mo'okuauha to prestigious aliinui of kapai aina o Hawaii. However, I do not use this to fulfill my agenda. I use this, I recognize my kupuna to understand that they keep me in check. They remind me of what ponu leadership looks like. And they remind me of what kuleana and kulana looks like because I am a mo'opuna of them. I want to mahalo you folks for being here today, aloha'e alo, and sitting in front of us, not on a tier above us, but at our level. It's important for us to realize that aloha'e alo is the best way to effectively have discourse about certain issues that may be tough to handle. Please remember, I ask you board, to remember your kuleana, that it's not just to one agency, but the greater Lahui. And sometimes, they fight back and forth. And so this is important to consider when we're trying to think of what looks like ponu leadership and what looks like ponu ways of doing things. Because ponu to me is being in harmony not just with yourself, but it's in being in harmony with na'akua, okapai aina o Hawaii, na'aina, apau, and na'akanaka, people that you may not agree with and people that you do agree with. I want to point out that the debacle here that we have seen regarding geothermal is exactly how these consultations go. They get a team of Kanaka who perhaps may have awana away from their ponu path, who scream and yell at opposing Kanaka, who don't believe what they're saying. And they tell us, those who feel with their whole being, which by the way, being a ponu Hawaiian is being ponu in your spirituality, in your emotional state, in your mental state, and your physical state. What I do not see here in these consultations is precisely that spiritual state. I have yet to see, they talk about kulana, I have yet to see kumu hulapele practitioners who have a deep, deep, deep understanding of what their akua is and who their akua comes from, and understands that geothermal is not what we should be doing and looking only at. And understands that geothermal is not what we should be doing and looking only at. They said, geothermal is the only way, however, we know that is not true. They get cultural Kanaka who don't even live here, do not get to experience the effect, the negative effects of geothermal, and tell us, this is right, because I'm culturally correct and you're culturally wrong. But that's just not how it should be. Where is the ho'oponopono, where is the reconciliation, where is the opposing voices both coming together and having the conversation that we need to have? It's not just having a conversation where people get paid and have money in their pockets to tell you what they think is right. It's also having the conversation of having people that know what they're doing, are active practitioners of their worship, tupele, and saying, hey, that's not pono. And you should know that. Because if your akua tells you one thing, and you're disregarding that because your monetary akua is telling you another thing, then that is not pono, that is pono ole. That is not what Hawaiian leadership looks like, that is not what moving holistic values look like, and that is absolutely not what pono leadership looks like. If you are so set in stone in your ways of thinking, then you have no place of requesting something that goes against a chunk of native Hawaiians who continuously, for the past fifty-plus years, have said no to geothermal in any state. So I leave you with this, and I ask you with this, Chair, that if you are deciding, or if you're not deciding to fund Waika, keep in consideration these types of consultations. Because having consultations, and having other people just scream at you and telling you that this is what you need, is not pono to me. Especially if they're not thinking seven generations ahead, and they're only thinking about themselves. Opellela ku'u'a'ku'a, land back, kukia imana. Mahalo.
Next up is Kamalani Kapeliela. Followed by David, and then finally will be John McBride. Aloha.
Aloha. Are we still here, Kako? We're still here. And mahalo, it is Kapeliela. Anyway, aloha, guys, my name is Kamalani Kapeliela.
You can do whatever you like.
I can't talk loud too. Anyway, aloha'nu'i, my name is Kamalani Kapeliela. I am a native Hawaiian woman, I am a native Hawaiian practitioner, a mother, an artist, a musician. I'm a child of North Kohala, South Kona, and Hilo, my hometown. I've had the privilege to live in a very expansive life with my daughters between Hawaii and Otearoa for the past ten years. My exposure to our Maori tuakana and the fa'na' and iwi system, along with being reared Hawaiian, speaks to the tone of the mana'o I would like to share. I've seen and I've lived what it can look like when the people work with the people and for the people. We can be native Hawaiian and still move in arrogance and indifference toward our people, especially those who realities we are far, far, far removed from. We can be native Hawaiian and still be guilty of pursuing affairs which pose very real threats, and do not align with the integrity of the majority. Being native Hawaiian as individuals, as business, as an organized entity, is not a trump card. Koko may grant you a seat at the table, but it does not by default bestow upon the trust or support. The future we face and the decisions to be made should not solely reflect the nepotism or the trickle-down ideologies of any overhead entity, whether Oha, whether Waikas Consulting, or the interest of the occupying governing entity, and so on, and so forth. This is a time we have more information at our fingertips than any generation before us. Our ideas and our understandings have developed at speed, while our patience has and likely to continue to wear thin. We are a generation of discernment. We are a generation who are not happy to sing and dance to the song of numbers and statistics. We are the generation who are birthing and raising the generations that will ultimately outlive yours and mine. That is how far into the future we are seeing into. We are also, we are also so willing to sacrifice the comforts and conveniences of today's time, that you think, all of us, we're just so caught up in, we're not willing to let it go. We are, we are. If that means better for us, if that means better for Keki that I will never see, be raised, because I will be long gone by then. I will let it go, we will let it go. We are an innovative people. And I implore you all over here, I know it takes a really... It takes a lot of energy to make like, at this point, you listening, you've been sitting there for a long time, you've had a lot to listen to. But I implore you to consider what it means to be innovative, not only to you, but to us. And integrate accordingly. We are at a tipping point of either being complicit, willingly complicit, and allowing for irreparable damage to continue to be done on micro and macro levels, or to not only seize the moment, but pause. Take the moment to pause. Pivot, really consult kupuna. Not exploit our take on their essence for a PowerPoint presentation. And to say simply, and it is simple sometimes, we overcomplicate stuff. But simply, Hawaiians deserve to live in hawai'i. Hawaiians deserve to thrive in hawai'i. The health, the well-being, and the perpetuity of the Hawaiian is the priority. Foreign interests cannot be so much more of a concern that we are letting people on this magical list die off before they have a chance, yeah? My final thought is, don't let all of this be optics, you folks. That table, that's our table. We got plenty mouths to feed. And I know it's been a very intense day. But I like asking this question, and I want you to ask it to me back. What do you think it sounds like when the opu is full? What does it sound like when the umeke overfloweth? No, for real, like, ask me, ask me. Ask me what? Ask me what? As a musician, this is what it sounds like to me. The music that I come from, comes from the aina, comes from what it feels like to be home, what it feels like to close your eyes, to smell that smell, to feel that feeling, to feel the temperature, to know, just in your senses, if you're leeward side or windward side. And it sounds like when the opu is full and the umeke is full. And I don't like lose that. We don't like lose that. It's important that that stays with us, because that is the beauty of our people. We're not only just mad. We feel the things that we feel because we care. Because I want my babies to know what this is. And I'm gonna cry, because it is that deep. It is that deep. It's good to have the professionalism that you can sit there and you can look at us blank-faced, but it is this deep. And I hope you remember that.
Mahalo, thank you. Next speaker is David. And followed by David will be our last speaker, which is John McBride. Aloha, David.
Aloha, Mai Kako.
Oha.
My name is David, I've never testified at a Oha meeting, but I have testified against Pa'akula when they had the last testifying stuff. But I wanted to just state that I oppose the geothermal and the further destruction on both the Waikai development and Mauna Kea. I found it interesting that Waikas is making the claim that the native-led movement would avoid benefits flowing away from native communities, but only touching on cultural points in two slides with open-ended sentences left to interpretation. How many a'ali'i will have to be removed on this site? How many of the ohio will be trampled? A tree that was once dominant is now reduced to an EIS statement lumbered loss, void of cultural value and the impacts to the watershed. How does desertification of aina impact the i'iwi and the pina'u? I did wanna call out the only comments made during the presentation was Kaikahale asking the presenter to further explain the Oha investment terms. Does that mean the board values the monetary value of the geothermal more than the reciprocal relationship with aina? I would like to ask the board and the presenters, what does Pele Honuamea receive in this relationship? And for you to reflect as to why this presenter felt like the monetary value would interest this board more than expanding on aloha'aina and malama'aina. This project is framed to help the native tenants, but priority questions does not reflect these values that you claim. What is being valued, then, is accounting, not accountability. Operating from a colonial, rather than a kanaka Maoli perspective. I oppose all efforts to become corporately complicit with the desecration of aina, no matter in which form and who proposes it. Kamali ho'e iki'a'ku'a, thank you.
Aloha. Aloha, David, and our last testifier is John McBride. Welcome, John. Oha.
Aloha. John McBride, third generation, yokaha, beneficiary, according to the act. Now, I hear plenty prob... I was gonna come up with something else, but in the last couple of minutes, I decided to change what I was gonna talk to you guys about. Me and Kai, we're kinda same. The difference with me and Kai is, he's far a Hawaiian. I'm far a Hawaiian. I get holy name, McBride. You get Hawaiian name, Kahili. The koko in us, the same. The blood flowing through us, the same. A lot of problems we're hearing today. I mean, you name it, Hawaiians get problems up the ying yang, we can stack them up as tall as Mauna Kea mountain. If we had the right people in legislature, a lot of these problems can solve. We can solve these problems. But we get the wrong people over there, they're on the other side of the street. And some of them, they pacify us. Some of them, they say they understand. Pacify understanding, last time I talked to you folks, you know move the needle. No move needle. Protest, no move needles. Vote, move needles. Let me tell you about one word that I learned. Two words. One is called value. The other one is called worth. So think about that, value and worth. This bottle of water costs two dollars. That's the value. How holy way of saying, metric system, I put two dollars on this, this is what the value is. You need this water, you're gonna drink them. But get plenty water around here, so you don't need worry, two bucks come around, no problem. But I put you in one desert, and you stay starving for water. What is the worth that is water? More than two bucks. Because you're gonna die if you don't get them. You see what the worth is? More than a value. What I'm trying to tell you folks is, we gotta put value in our native Hawaiians. We gotta teach them. Gotta educate them. Gotta help them. Because a splinter paddle and a kapu system is not what is running now. Democracy is what's running. And unless they know what the game is, they're on the bleachers, watching. And they're watching the game going on. And you know what? When the guys who in the game make the decision, us Hawaiians who stay on the bleachers, collateral damage. We reacting. Collateral damage, because after the fact. I brought this up to you guys one time, and I mentioned about how important it is for our legislature to know about the Hawaiian Homes Act, right? I decided I'm gonna tell you guys what I went tell three legislatures. Like, I'm gonna tell you who they was. Tim Richards, Inoi, and Sue Deloy. And I told them, they didn't broke the law. They say, oh, we don't broke laws. They said, name one. One, I get ten, but you like one, I give you one good one. You guys didn't put Kaliwazi inside for chairman. You go, oh yeah, we didn't put him in. I said, to look at the act. What the act say? You gotta put the chairman among the people who's sitting on the commission. You don't got a problem from outside. You put the person who's on the commission, and choose from there. But you guys never do that. You guys didn't bring him from outside, you guys didn't make him commissioner. You even broke the act. You know what they said? I never know. I never know, it's not gonna, not one good answer. If you understood the act, you wouldn't have made that mistake. And that's why I say, gotta educate. We gotta help our people. Now we stuck with him. Hate to say it, but I'm sure there's avenues to work that out, but that's what I'm talking about, gotta educate, gotta help. Gotta empower our people, Hawaiians, and let them know what the game is. If not, welcome to collateral damage. That's what gonna happen to us. Aloha.
Thanks, Uncle John. That ends our community concerns and celebrations portion on our agenda. This time we have some announcements to make before I recognize our trustees for closing comments. First of all, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs would like to mahalo the Kahaka'ula Kelly Colani College of Hawaiian Language here at the University of Hawaii at Hilo for the use of this space. We'd like to also mahalo those that took the time since Monday to come to our workshops, those that helped facilitate our community visits, starting on Monday in Kona, Tuesday in Waimea, yesterday and last night here in Hilo. Thank you to all from the community that came out to our workshops and to help arrange our site visits. We want to mahalo our staff, who tirelessly worked behind the scenes on this four-day huakai, while also preparing our emergency aid action item for the Board of Trustees in a very expeditious way of doing that. We really appreciate that. And finally, to our trustees and their staff who took the time to come to our huakai. Our next board meeting will be next week, November thirteenth, on Oahu. And before I have any closing comments or call for adjournment, I'm going to ask if any of our trustees would like a few closing remarks. Trustee Akaka?
Mahalo, I wanna say mahalo to all that made these meetings and site visits possible, and to all of you for coming and sitting in and attending and listening to others share their mana'o. Mahalo'nu'i for spending this time with us, and we look forward to continuing, seeing how we can seek opportunities to hear what your concerns are and how we can apply that to the kuleana that we uphold too. Mahalo'nu'i. I also wanted to state too, I think it's important, as in current day, we have the challenges and we support the legacy and the will of our Princess Pawaihi, that it's always important to acknowledge also Princess Ruth Kelly Colani for the aina that she provided to Pawaihi to create this legacy for our people, and to those before her that made all this possible for us. I always think it's important to have the aina acknowledgement. Also, one other, what I wanted to share is that, in us talking about the koko that we would provide to our community in these times right now, I've received a news alert that the presidential administration must pay out full food assistance benefits by Friday, according to judge orders. So that we're made aware of some of what is happening in current time, and that we can pivot as need be. Mahalo again, everyone, for joining us.
Mahalo, Trustee Akaka. Trustee Kina?
Mahalo, Chair, for hosting us on the Big Island. Appreciate that very much. And mahalo to all of you for sharing your mana'o. It's a lot to take in, and we will be thinking about it and meditating on it and taking action accordingly. Bear with us, aloha.
Trustee Huna?
Yes, mahalo'nu'i to all of you.
Yes, mahalo'nui to all of you who actually took this time. I just wanted to share something that, something that I think I... Message is clear for me. I hear all these concerns, but I think something that we should take up in OHA is, I think we need to talk about the kingdom in OHA and amongst our board with our people, because I think it's something that's very important. You know, and I'm hearing you, it's like, you know, I hear what she's saying. Maybe we drink too much koolaid, you know? So we have to get on it, we have to hear our people, and I think it's very important that we bring that to the table. There's a lot of issues that affect that talk. So I just want to thank you for that. So mahalo.
Aloha'nui, aloha. And finally, also wanna mahalo all of you that came today. To each of you that took the time to come, wherever you came from, if you drove all the way from Waimea or from Na'alehu, or you just walked out from your dorm here on the campus to be here with us today. We really appreciate your attendance and your presence. To those that came up to speak, to those that listened, and those that cared enough to show up. It's really important. And whether your words came from a place of gratitude, they came from frustration or conviction, please know that they were received by all of us here at OHA with aloha. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs is not an institution apart from the people. It is made up of people. Us, like all of you, who love this aina and who love our lahui deeply. Our mission is singular, is to improve the well-being of native Hawaiians. And to do that, we need to be in community. We need to be doing exactly what you just saw. What we did last night and what we did the previous two nights. To hear directly from you, to learn from you, and to find ways to integrate your mana'o into the work that too often happens out of view. Lack of transparency, beyond the headlines or the microphones. When we don't gather like this, we risk losing sight of the everyday advocacy that happens quietly but powerfully. Policy work, partnerships, the defense of our rights and our resources. These are acts of kuleana that may not make the news, but that shape our future just the same. But iki'ila today reminds us of is that we share far more in common than what divides us. We share passion, we share purpose, we share a legacy of kuleana that runs deep. And it's okay, it is okay, that we don't agree on every position. What matters is that we never allow external forces or differing views or purity tests to weaken a mana'au that lives in our shared identity, native Hawaiians. And one day, perhaps sooner than we think, one of you will be up here in these seats. And you'll be asked to do your best. You'll be asked to listen. You'll be asked to come out to community. Do as much as possible for as many as possible in the best interest of our lahui. And we look forward to that day. To your energy, to your perspective, and to your lived experience that each of you can bring to our lahui, to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And until then, let's continue to stand together in aloha and in kuleana for our people, for our aina, and for our Keiki. Trustee Huna? You get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Trustees discussion, hearing non, roll call.
Trustee Huna?
Aye.
Trustee Akaka?
Aye.
Trustee Akina?
Aye, and aloha.
Kaikahale?
Aye.
You have four yes votes, we are adjourned.
Aloha.